Yeah, you got a good point. It's definitely gonna be around.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the May 4th, 2022 City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission Meeting. We'll call the meeting to order, and we do have a quorum present. Again, everybody's here. Thank you so much. And first items of business tonight will be our public hearings, and we have five public hearings tonight. Our first one is a zoning ordinance amendment regarding amendments to Sections 2, 7, 24, Chart 1, and Chart 4 pertaining to alcohol manufacturing. The City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Mr. Hankins, welcome.
Good evening, Chair Jones.
Good evening.
Commissioner, how are y'all doing tonight?
Great.
Good. So, yes, the first thing on the agenda tonight is what we've colloquially called the microbrewery ordinance. We went over it at the last meeting, and I've repackage that information here slightly different tonight. So as I'm sure y'all know, microbreweries and small batch production of beer, whiskey, wine, all that need has really experienced explosive growth over the last number of years, has led to new opportunities for tourism, economic development, and created pathways for entrepreneurship and small business ownership and participation for what previously may have been considered just kind of a garage hobby. But with that growth, our current zoning regime for alcoholic beverage manufacturing has become antiquated. So staff has been working both internally and with stakeholders to try to fashion a more modern approach that meets the needs of today's industry. To quickly recap our current zoning, we've got two uses: alcoholic beverage manufacture, which is just a general definition that controls every type of alcohol out there, and brewery. Alcoholic beverage manufacture and breweries are both right now limited to just the HI and the GI zones. Alcoholic beverage manufacture is regulated with a few use regulations at End Note 20. Brewery has no specific regulations attached to them, although I think it has been our practice to generally treat those as a subset of alcoholic beverage manufacture and use the same End Note regulations. Like I said, that regime has not been updated in some time and has become antiquated and does not reflect the growing interest in local brew beverages, including the fact that microbreweries themselves are becoming seen more as destinations and not simply as manufacturing locations. The current zones are also restrictive in that they are listed only as the heavy and general industrial zones. They're not allowed in any of the commercial areas in Murfreesboro. So the process that we went through, like I said, was both an internal and a stakeholder-driven approach where we had multiple meetings with different people in the industry to try to figure out what was going to be the best fit for our city planning and zoning. It was a very iterative process. We've been through multiple versions of drafts. At each meeting, we felt like we were getting closer to the mark as far as finding the right balance between protecting the city's planning and zoning interests and opening up the door for these new types of industry. We did some area research at different cities within Tennessee, most notably Nashville, Knoxville, Clarksville, Chattanooga. Every city has different forms of regulations. So we also looked at, I think what a lot of people consider to be one of the industry leaders in this area, which was Asheville, North Carolina. We also looked at different planning resources that we had within the department as well as doing typical statutory research to see what can be done within Tennessee. So for the proposed amendments, we want to separate out the uses from the generic alcoholic beverage manufacturing for breweries, distilleries, and wineries. And as you'll see, wineries will also include meaderies, mainly because that's the way that the state classifies them currently. And we've also, in addition to those uses, proposing output-based categories. Artisan would be the smallest of each of those uses. For beer, we also have a microbrewery category, which is kind of your midsize, and then maintaining the traditional industrial size uses. We're also proposing an entirely new use of brewpubs, which is really more of a subset of restaurants that also produce beer on-site. And as part of those proposed amendments, we're anticipating Planning Commission site plan review for all of these uses. So starting with breweries, like I said, industrial is going to be the largest traditional output, kind of what we imagine today. As far as businesses that are in Murfreesboro right now, I'm sure you're all familiar with May Day Brewery. We consider May Day to be the threshold for what will be an industrial brewery and then going up from there anywhere to Anheuser-Busch size. We want to maintain the industrial character and zoning of these industrial uses, although we feel it would be appropriate to also expand that into the light industrial, so cover all the industrial zones on that, but specifically take the industrial breweries out of the city core overlay and to keep those areas specific for the microbreweries and artisan breweries. The industrial will keep their End Note regulations at End Note 20, which we've basically just done some cleanup on those, expanded some of the permitted uses, maintained the current 250-foot setback from residential structures, and we're also adding the requirement that fencing that faces either the right-of-way or other adjacent properties be decorative in nature. Microbreweries, like I said, be in the midsize. We set the cap on that at up to 1,250 barrels a month. This most closely aligns probably with what's going on in Asheville as far as the cap that they have set for microbreweries. We want to expand their zoning footprint outside of the industrial zones to include the commercial highway zones and the central business district. And we perceive this being probably the primary driver for commercial highway and in your city core overlay areas. And then the smallest, like I said, was artisan uses being up to 600 barrels a month and also having attached to that a 3,000-square-foot max operating size. This complies with the overall artisan use category that we're seeking to implement in the city with that 3,000-square-foot size. 600 barrels, when we worked with stakeholders, we felt like that was a good cutoff point between the artisan and the microbreweries due to the small size and small footprint of the manufacturing and that these are probably going to be more of, I don't want to say just your hobby brewers, but perhaps your brewers that don't look at this as their primary industry, perhaps. And with that smaller footprint and smaller size, we feel that it would also be more appropriate in your commercial fringe and commercial local zones where they might be able to fit into a smaller transitional area. With distilleries, a couple of general items on there. Distilleries have become sort of the catch-all industrial use for alcoholic beverage manufacturing that's not either beer or wine or mead because it includes both distilling and rectifying of the original alcoholic beverage as well as mixing alcohol with other beverages, you know, come up with your packaged mixed drinks, your hard lemonades, things like that. And for that, we have, instead of using barrelage, we've gone with gallonage again just to try to comport with the way that state law separates out beer barrelage from other gallonage. Set that at 5,500 gallons a month. Again, talking with some of the stakeholders that we had that would have been in this area, felt like that was a good cutoff point between the artisan use and the industrial use. You'll notice with distilleries and wineries, we don't have a mid-range use just because those industries aren't quite as well-defined in those tiers as breweries are. So with what we've seen as far as interest coming into Murfreesboro, we feel like keeping it with either an artisan or a full industrial use is the best starting point right now. Again, industrial will stay in those industrial zones with no city core overlay participation, whereas artisan distilleries, we feel like could go in the CCO, the CBD, as well as commercial highway areas. Wineries, like I said, will also include mead for purposes of this zoning. Both are used in the same fermentation processes and aging, wine just being with grapes and mead being with honey. Again, exact same industrial and artisan categories that we had for distilleries with the output and zoning classifications. Brewpubs, like I said, is a new kind of more restaurant but also brewery use that we see. Limited the output there to 425 barrels a month, 35% max floor area for the brewing use. And the reason we went with that number, talking with stakeholders, we felt like that was a good balance to let them have enough floor space in the brewpub to be able to fully utilize the manufacturing process, but we were very careful not to make it look like the brewing was the primary use in the brewpub. We want the restaurant to be the primary use in the brewpub. And again, with the new regulations that they're going to have in End Note 30, we've expanded their permitted uses to things like live entertainment, brewery-side tours, things like that. And after talking with the stakeholders, we also feel it's appropriate to allow up to 10% self-distribution to get their product out to maybe other restaurants as a marketing Parking calculations for each of the uses. Right now, the industrial will probably generally stay pretty much as it is for alcoholic beverage manufacturing now with the additional calculation of outdoor seating. We've noticed a lot of breweries of all sizes are now doing more tours, maybe having certain other accessory uses inside and outside. So we want the parking to reflect both the parking calculation for the primary brewery use plus if they have outdoor seating areas or outdoor event spaces, that those also need to be calculated into their parking requirements. For the micro and artisan uses, we have simplified the calculation to be a hybrid of what you might see in a restaurant setting with just some additional spaces for employee parking. So it's a flat five spaces plus one for every two indoor seats plus one for every three outdoor seats, again trying to capture the idea that these places are really utilizing both indoor and outdoor spaces more often, so we want to be able to capture that for parking. Brewpubs follow the restaurants. And just wanted to let you know too that the zoning ordinance that we have here is for zoning classifications only. Like I said, the output, we have worked with the stakeholders to try to figure out within the city what output requirements correlate with what footprints and where those footprints can best go into different areas of the city. One question we also had come up in some of the stakeholder meetings that the naming for the classification purposes is not exclusive to the city, namely with brewpubs. Even though we're using that as a classification, if you have a microbrewery-sized use that wants to have a restaurant attached as an accessory use, they can call their restaurant a brewpub as a marketing term, and it doesn't affect their zoning. They also have to comply with all the other laws that are out there. I think last time we talked about city code has setbacks for certain liquor manufacturing. They have to follow the same setbacks as onsite or offsite liquor retailers. They also have to comply with all the state law regulations as far as reporting requirements, the amount of barrelage and self-distribution they would be able to do on a normal basis. So in conclusion, the proposed amendments, we feel recognize the opportunities that have been presented to us with modernized production techniques specifically in the brewery context but also in the context of distilleries, wineries, and meaderies. The fact that these places are increasingly becoming tourism destinations in and of themselves and the fact that they are increasingly having accessory uses associated with them, restaurants, event spaces, retail sales, et cetera, and the fact that within the city we see a tremendous opportunity for small business ownership, participation, and an increase in local entrepreneurship. With the increased visibility and availability of zoned areas, we can balance the protection of the citizens of Murfreesboro and the uses that we have in our overall master plan while still allowing for the expansion. So with that, if there are any questions or comments?
I've got a question. So in the presentation, it talked about brewpubs being allowed in the mixed-use area?
That's correct.
So what if a distillery is similar, so would a distillery, if it had the same output, be considered a brewpub that could be in MU? Or are we saying a distillery that would be similar to a brewpub can't not, cannot be in MU?
No, it would be exclusive to beer and the beer brewery side. So a distillery, regardless of, I guess, its output, would either be classified as an artisan distillery or an industrial distillery, but in no event would they be able to go into the mixed-use district.
What's the thought process there? If it's smaller, I can see there's, could be a distillery wanting to have a restaurant that may not be, have a similar output as the brewpub. I'm not sure I follow why we're not allowing it the same thing for that in MU?
Probably two primary reasons. The first one being with the MU zone. The MU zone is pretty much exclusive to the Gateway District in the GDO overlays. And talking with staff, we've wanted to be very protective of what goes into the Gateway District and specifically in those mixed-use areas. So we've wanted to have the smallest of all of these manufacturing uses and, like I said, the one that's really camouflaged mostly as a restaurant to be able to go in here so as not to give any sort of industrial or manufacturing character to the Gateway. The reason it went primarily with breweries instead of other types of micro or artisan distilleries is really just where the market is right now. You'll see some distilleries that will have restaurants attached to them, but anything that you see in the brewpub character right now, especially in the state of Tennessee, is going to be associated with beer. So not to say that at some point in the future, the opportunity couldn't present itself, but again, with the way that we've studied things and talked to our stakeholders, it seems like beer was really the primary driver, so we wanted to leave it with that character right now.
I think it'll come.
I'll welcome if it does.
Yeah, okay.
Can I ask a very general question?
Yes, ma'am.
I feel sure I should know the answer to, but I don't. The city core overlay versus the city business district, is this, obviously the city business district, is that just right in the downtown area?
Yes.
And the city core overlay is the wider?
Yes, ma'am.
The entire city?
City core overlay, and Matthew can help me discuss the boundaries better. Yes, central business district is basically the square and kind of the surrounding blocks of that. City core overlay extends, I believe, south from the bottoms all the way up to the highlands and...
Yeah, it's basically bounded on the west side by Broad Street, on the south side by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, on the east side by Middle Tennessee Boulevard, and on the north side by East Clark Boulevard.
And so the way that we've tried to tie everything in together with that is including both the central business district specifically for the artisan, microbreweries, and some of the other, and the brewpubs, while at the same time inside the city core overlay section of the zoning ordinance specifically prohibiting the industrial size uses from anywhere in there because central business district obviously is its own zoning classification, whereas CCO has several subclassifications inside of it, including some industrial zones inside the bottoms.
All right. Other questions? Will we open the public hearing? Thank you, Mr. Hankins. Appreciate that very much. I love the presentation. That was so much easier to read than this. Thank you so much. All right, we will open the public hearing on this item and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak. Before you start coming forward, I will ask that when you come forward to speak, you state your name and your address. You will have up to three minutes to make your comments, and all comments will be made to the Planning Commission directly. We'll take notes of any questions you have, and at the end of the public hearing, we will do our best to answer any questions. Most of those answers will come from staff, I'm sure, or other people that have been involved in this, but we will get your questions answered. So with that, again, anybody that would like to speak on this item, please come forward to the podium.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Tony Johnston. I am a professor at Middle Tennessee State University, and I am the Director of the Fermentation Science Degree Programs at the university. To give you a quick update, the program started in 2017. We currently offer undergraduate and graduate programs, and we have a total of between 50 and 55 students in the programs combined right now. I think it's very important to note that just about every single one of my students work somewhere as they go through school, typical of MTSU. They tend to find, want to find jobs in industries that involve fermentation. Although brewing and distilling and winemaking is not the, are not the only industries that are used in fermentation, those are generally the easiest to find part-time jobs in. And presently, they are taking out jobs in Nashville, for example, or driving to Nashville, driving to Lewisburg, driving as far away as Franklin, making quite far commutes. So this concept is very valuable, I know, for my students to potentially have opportunities for employment closer to the campus. Although all of my students don't live in Murfreesboro, it just lends itself very well to supporting our program. The students, some of our students have since graduation gone on to start their own brewing operations or brewpubs or breweries. It fits very well into our concept, and although I'm certain that my students are not going to fill all the jobs that are created, it is going to be a real boon to my ability to recruit students to come into my program because they can gain that experience before they graduate and go out and do what they're going to do in their careers. Just wanted to endorse the idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mary K. Mattson. This is my husband, Michael Mattson. We're the owners of Illusion Meads. And the state of Tennessee currently has two meaderies, which are similar to microwineries. They're located in Clarksville and Nashville, and the biggest reason for this slow number is because of outdated zoning requirements for a meadery to be able to open in many municipal locations. And Murfreesboro current zoning requirements for meaderies, wineries, and breweries is for us to open in industrial-zoned locations only. These are usually in isolated areas with minimal exposure to customers, and the ability, availability for locations in industrial zoning areas are hard to find and most offer square footage that is too large for a craft beverage business to be able to afford. We believe that revising the zoning requirements for craft beverage facilities to be able to produce and operate within the populated areas of Murfreesboro will not only modernize the city but also would be a greater appeal and asset to the residents and visitors of Murfreesboro. Therefore, we support the change for proposed zoning, the proposed zoning ordinance, and request that you vote yes to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming out. Who else would like to speak?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Brandon Bingman. I live at 1112 North Spring Street here in Murfreesboro. I support this zoning ordinance, and I urge you to do the same. I've worked with the Planning Department directly on this initiative. This is actually the culmination of years of different people locally engaging with the Planning Department to come up with some reasonable solutions to the currently very restrictive zoning on alcohol manufacturers. Some of us here have wanted to start breweries, brewpubs, wineries, and many other local businesses, but it's been really hard with the way the zoning is now. In 2021, Greg and his team continued this dialogue that we started with a group of us here locally. They got a lot of input from us how to best make changes that are appropriate for the community. They've listened to our feedback. They've drafted changes accordingly. It's really been a collaborative effort. They've really listened to us, and I appreciate their hard work. I'd love to see more breweries, wineries, craft distilleries, and other similar businesses pop up here in Murfreesboro just like I see in other cities that I like to visit. There's a pretty long list of reasons why, but I'll try to limit it to just a few. The economic impact, first of all. Let's keep our money local and spend it in Murfreesboro instead of sending it to Nashville's craft beverage destinations. A larger tax base and a local economic multiplier is better for all of us. Basically, you guys, I think, know what that means. When you spend your money locally somewhere, that business takes that revenue and tends to spend it locally as well and so on. So let's do that instead of spending money in Nashville. Crime reduction, this is a really fun one. According to nationwide studies, you can look them up with the Brewers Association, crime is lower around breweries than bars. In fact, the addition of a brewery in a neighborhood lowers crime. Why? You know, there's, you can read up on that and find out. Yeah. Well, the way they studied that is they looked, they were able to pull the data on what kind of calls to action to the police department received, and then they looked at what kind of phone call it was, like what was the incident that happened? And there were less calls and, you know, there's classifications for the incidents, and there are more minor incidents near breweries and then typically more calls and higher incidents around bars. So why? We'll let you, you know, we'll let you look into that. But yeah, so if you support lowering crime, you already support this. There's actually a number of middle Tennessee farms, one here in Rutherford County that grows barley and wheat, different raw materials. that grows barley and wheat, different raw materials that go into beer. Um, so you could pretty soon drink a beer that's grown and brewed and fermented right here in Rutherford County, and what a fun way to support local, local agriculture. Uh, Tennessee ranks 36th per capita in breweries amongst Tennessee cities. Uh, Murfreesboro should really be leading the way on growing this economic sector, as well as other craft beverage segments. I'm speaking mostly to breweries, because that's my background, but cideries, wineries, it's all, it's all good. Personally, on my brewery project that I've been working on for a couple of years now, I've had potential investors interested, and they've finally said, you know, I don't think we're interested because of the lack of suitable locations, and that's due to the, to the restrictive zoning. And so by not supporting this ordinance, you're literally preventing people from investing money into Murfreesboro. Um, so I, I strongly urge you to, to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Anybody else?
Hello. I'm, I'm Anthony. I live in Nashville. I hope I'm, I hope I'm allowed to be up here.
Anthony?
But, but my parents, my parents live in, my, my parents live here in Murfreesboro, so...
Anthony, what's your last name?
Oh, Coon, I'm sorry.
Anthony Coon.
849 Dover Glen Drive in Nashville, if you want to know that. But, uh, but anyway, so I'm kind of an example of somebody that will be visiting the breweries that will come here to Murfreesboro as a result of, uh, you know, supporting this ordinance. So, I mean, currently, yeah, we have, yeah, we have May Day, it was, that was, that was listed, uh, we have, uh, Panther Creek, but we, but there's not, there could be a lot more, especially with, with the population, because, you know, basically, the, one good example is look at Clarksville, it's a similar, similarly sized city, and those guys have, what, eight breweries at least, eight or nine, you know, and, uh, but having, uh, having kinds, having breweries like that, I mean, there's lots of people like myself that enjoy really good, good, good quality crap beer, though, going to travel, I mean, there's plenty of it in, in Nashville, but, you know, we get more over here, there're going to be more people are going to come over here and visit, visit the breweries here and support them in and around Middle Tennessee. You know, there's, there's brewery groups and, and crap beer groups and things like that, that we'd like to support, uh, local businesses as they are, you know, it's going to provide jobs and, you know, good economic growth and that, that kind of thing. And, uh, it's just, I think it's something that's very good for the neighborhood and just something that, uh, it, you know, gives people places to go and brings people in, like somebody talked about tourism, you know, that's going to bring, yes, going to be more tax dollars spent, and, you know, not only does there the brewery, but people, people are coming there, and they're going to probably spend their, their money in other local businesses in, in town, and it's going to provide more jobs and things like that, but it's just, you know, it's, it's something, it allows people to, more folks to start businesses, you know, the whole American dream entrepreneurship and that sort of thing. So, you know, if that happens, we get more breweries here. Yeah, I live in Antioch, so I'm only 25, 30 minutes from here, and my parents are in town, so I'm going to come here personally more often to visit more breweries that are coming here, and certainly my friends will, and a lot of the other, uh, folks that, uh, folks in crap beer groups around the area are going to come here as well. There's a, there's a homebrew club based here in Murfreesboro, Midstate Craft Beer Club, uh, that's, they're very, going to be very supportive of things like that, so. And we can see a lot more of those kinds of events that will happen here in, in Murfreesboro, and I think it's going to allow a lot more growth in that area and a lot more people to, you know, it's going to kind of give a positive, a positive vibe, you know, so, especially going into other kinds of neighborhoods that aren't just industrial, you know, like in, in, if ever, anybody's ever been to the nation's, uh, the nation's, uh, neighborhood in Nashville, you got like Zanz, it's like, it's in an old church building, it's really cool. You have Harding House, that's, that's located like in a, in a built, a mixed-use building with got residences above it, but it's down here, and it's in a cool neighborhood, and it's, it works really well. I mean, things like that would be possible, uh, in Murfreesboro once, uh, once this ordinance gets passed, hopefully, it, hopefully, once it does. So, and I think that, uh, I guess for anybody who enjoys crap beer that they, you know, please do, uh, support this, I think it's going to do nothing but good, and, uh, I think it'll, it'll bring a lot more revenue and tourists into the city, so.
Thank you, Anthony. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak?
How you doing?
Hi.
My name is Rick Low. I'm at 4208 Well Chance Road here in Murfreesboro. I've been a homebrewer for 25 years. Currently trying to start a commercial brewery, which is Rabidium Brewing. I have been working with the city for a few years, looking at locations, and with current ordinances, unfortunately, we haven't been able to find anything. Only options are heavy industrial. And as you know, with Murfreesboro growing and Amazon, all these other places are moving into heavy industrial areas, it's limiting stuff for small businesses like us to, to get a location. Personally, I've been helping support the city, you know, through different events, like we're doing Jazz Fest this weekend, I'm a brewer there. Uh, we help out Oakland's Mansion. As Tony Johnson said, you know, we're, I work with him as well with MTSU. I don't work personally with him, but have, you know, worked with him to try to help, you know, bring stuff here to the city. But I think with this, these, this ordinance being passed, it would allow us to move into smaller locations so we could get a foothold, you know, at least start our business, get something going, you know, build up a reputation and a brand and hopefully grow, and move into an industrial place at, you know, some point in time. But I think with the, this ordinance would open up a lot of opportunity, not just to, to, you know, small craft breweries, but also would bring in potential other breweries as well, you know? We see other companies coming here to Murfreesboro, so you're not just talking about us little guys, you're also looking at potentially bigger breweries as well coming in here. And also to speak on your question, Ken, I think part of, part of that has to do with alcohol content and the way that beers brewed versus distilling, there's different state laws in place and how that's done, so I think with the small brew pub type thing, I don't think that would work out for distilling, but, you know, for beer makes more sense, because it's lower alcohol content.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else like to speak? Okay. If not, we'll close the public hearing. I'll start out by saying, I think it's a record that we had a public hearing that had all positive comments. Not a single person up here to tell us why we don't want to do this. Thank you. That was kind of exciting. Um, I, I personally, I've been, on, just on the sidelines, kind of following this, I think it's an exciting project. I know the staff has been working really hard on it. I, I think it's a wonderful thing for, for small business, as many of you mentioned, I'm excited about that. I think there's a lot of areas in our city, and especially the downtown area, that, you know, this will really help jumpstart and, um, revitalize some areas that might need a little help, and I, I personally think it's a... I love the work they've done. I think it's a great ordinance, and I, I hope that everybody else will see that. What questions do y'all have?
I have one question and one comment. The question is, and I'm, don't mean to pick on just one of the people that spoke, but I don't know what a meaterie is. Is there some reason why there are only two of those? I mean, I, I understand kind of what a pub is and what a brewery is, but is there some reason that we should be, that I should be scared that there's only two in the state of Tennessee, or whatever, two, you know, I mean, I don't, I'm serious, just ignorance, but I, I don't know what that is.
It really falls into the category of everything old is new again. Uh, mead has been around for hundreds and hundreds of years, predated wine, as a matter of fact, um, because the, Mike's actually educated me that one of the primary ingredient in mead is honey. Um, and it wasn't until, I guess, sometime later that grapes became kind of the primary mode of fermentation for wine, and then mead fell out of favor for a few hundred years. But it's starting to make a comeback culturally. You'll see, you've seen some commercial wineries dabble around in it, um, but it's, it's one of those things to where the, the industry and the reintroduction of mead is just in its nascent process.
There's nothing in the process that makes it more obnoxious or, or crazy to be around or any of that, is my real, is really my question.
Right, no, yes, it's, I think, I think Mike, Mike could probably speak to it a little more.
Now, you know, I mean, it, it's fine, as long as it's not something way different. I, I don't mean to belabor it that much, but...
It's not, and I'll, I'll save, I'll save for personal taste testing, the only difference I've seen is it's sweeter.
Okay. It's good, man. Mr. Mattson, I, I'm, I'm good with it, I just was curious if it was something that I needed to know, it just...
No, it's, so honey is basically, or I'm sorry, mead is, is basically honey wine. So it's a similar process to, um, wine that's fermented from grapes. The primary difference is the sugar is fermented from the honey sugars, so...
Do you have to drink it out of a big, like a big antler? I'm in.
Call it meateries instead of wineries. So there's, there's some meateries, um, some mead drinkers, they, they actually prefer to drink out of a horn.
I'm, I'm with it.
We, we, we don't, we get away from that.
All right.
But you can bring your own.
There's nothing, there's nothing obnoxious.
Okay.
Not really much different than, than radio to winemaking. And as far as two being in the state of Tennessee, this was, these were just recent. Clarksville was the first one that opened three years ago. Honey Tree Meter in Nashville opened two years ago. So they, the American Meadmakers Association has, puts out a report, and the last one they put out was back in 2017. And they had stated, I think it was 2013, there was only 60 meeteries throughout the whole US. By 2016, there was over 300, and last count of 2017, there's over 600. And since then, they've obviously been growing. We're, we're more at that right now. But, so obviously, at 600, um, an average throughout the country puts Tennessee way behind. I'm only two. So I'm, I'm actually hoping to be the third to open up in Rutherford County.
All right. Cool.
Any other questions?
I, I just have a comment, I can't, we've got two members of this board going to run for city council, I can't wait for their slogan that, the fact that they're going to reduce crime by voting for brewery. That's just a side note.
Hey, you stole my thunder. You stole my thunder.
Warren, I think he just boxed us, boxed us into something there.
There are no other questions. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all very much, and thank you for coming out and for all your help with the staff and everybody getting this, getting us to this point. We appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Madam Chair, I, I, real, very brief.
Yes, okay.
This is very, Joseph Adlot and I started this process, I think it was in 2014.
You're kidding.
And we then had something, uh, in 2017, as I recall the dates, and everyone got busy, and then something more important came up, and it got pushed to the back burner, and sat there until these folks began to, uh, press us to, to bring it out of, uh, out of the, off of the back burner. And, uh, so I, I appreciate them doing that, uh, and good things sometimes take a while to happen, but, uh...
I never got to make my comment after the question. You guys, since now we've passed it and I voted for it, you don't need to throw anything at me, but, so I can go with my brother to your place? Somebody put some Bud Light in the cooler, too. I know it's just... Just have a little Bud Light, too. I mean, all the craft stuff...
Please don't.
Craft stuff's cool, but...
Some bourbon would be nice.
My brother's son.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Okay. Moving on, we've got, let's see, we opened, we closed, and we voted, so. Item B on our agenda. We have a zoning application for approximately 13.7 acres located along Medical Center Parkway, Robert Rose Drive, and Maple Grove Drive, to be rezoned from MU and GDO1 to PUD, CH and GDO1. Vintage apartments in the TDK, TDK office. TDK Construction is the applicant. Ms. Green, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Good evening, planning commission members. Um, our second public hearing this evening is for you to consider an application that's been submitted to the planning department to rezone property that's located south of Medical Center Parkway, west of Robert Rose Drive, just across from Lothrick Way, and east of Maple Grove Drive. The property is shown on the map on the screen before you, and it, you can see that the map is divided into two colors. The smaller red or orange color is a request to rezone that property from its current mixed-use zoning to Commercial Highway District. It is located within a Gateway Design Overlay District and will remain within the Gateway Design Overlay District regardless of, um, any rezoning actions. And then the area that's blue is being proposed to be rezoned from Mixed Use District MU and GDO1 to Planned Unit District PUD, while remaining in the, the Gateway Design Overlay District as well. The property is located adjacent to the avenues, which is zone CH, also located within Gateway Design Overlay District, but the avenues also has a planned signage overlay district on it. The properties, and that's to the west, to the east, across Robert Rose Drive, is a, um, Robert Rose Village East master plan development that consists of a future assisted-care living facility, apartments, self-storage, commercial strip center, uh, bank, hotel, restaurant, and most famously, Krispy Kreme. The property's to the north, across from Medical Center Parkway, or is owned Mixed Use District or several commercial strip centers, but just further to the north off the screen is the Clary Park PUD Plan Unit District Development, which consists of PUD and CH zoning. The application that you have before you today is, um, to zone property to Planned PUD and CH. The PUD is, the applicant is TDK Construction, who has a, um, contract to purchase the property from the current owner. I did provide some information about the number of existing apartments within the area, since a, a large component, a significant part of this plan is to rezone it to allow apartments. Similar to, um, what I provided when you reviewed the Clary Park application, I wanted to just give you those updated numbers. So just within the Gateway Design Overlay District, there are currently 3,114 apartment units available or under construction, and that number does not include any of the existing townhomes or the proposed townhomes. It does not include any of the senior living, either existing or proposed, or the, um, any condos that are located within the Gateway Village mixed-use area. So the chart that I provided you is strictly for apartments. And then just to break that down further, um, using the interstate as a divider, the 3,114 apartments that are located within the overlay district, of those, 1,886 are located on this side of the interstate or the east side of the interstate. And then, um, I did just give you an illustration on a map showing the location of some apartments, and this map shows a 1,500-square-foot radius, which I thought was a comfortable walking distance or, um, traveling distance for, for people with different abilities to get around, and you can see within that 1,500 feet, there are 1,683 apartments. That number does not include what's across Interstate 24. You can see the green is kind of picking up, um, two complexes, but, but those were excluded from my numbers, just because they're not in the gateway, and really, there's, there's no easy way to walk to them since they're divided by the interstate. The, um, the property that we're looking at is a part of a master plan development called Robert Rose Village West. You may remember that I mentioned across Robert Rose Drive was Robert Rose Village East, and this is Robert Rose Village West. Um, Mr. Gatton owned both of the properties at one time, and I think had a, a solid naming strategy just to help, um, identify where these were. When I presented this to you at the workshop, there were just some questions about timeline, and so I will just give you some dates just to have an idea of what's happened or when it happened, but, um, and I'll start in 2013. In 2013, Mr. Gatton did own the, or Mr., the trustee, um, did own the property and submitted a master plan that showed this property, um, a potential rezoning plan... and submitted a master plan that showed this property, um, a potential rezoning plan, um, for this area. Let me zoom to that master plan just so you can see it. Here it is. And this sheet probably is the easiest to see. You can see that went in 2013 when Mr. Gatton submitted it to our department. They called it Robert Rose Village West, and they said that it was ideally located for any number of uses to help round out the mixed-use vision for Murfreesboro's gateway. The preliminary master plan envisioned a mixture of large commercial tracts, which are the orange and red parcels, um, surrounded by multiple smaller out parcels and rounded out by multifamily tract large enough to support over three hundred units. When this master plan was submitted, the property was zoned Commercial Highway District, CH. So from that time, um, further, we, the Planning Department used this as a tool in the rezoning process, so I'll just give you some dates. On May fifteenth, twenty thirteen, the Planning Commission approved plans for Peter D's Restaurant, which is, um, now McAllister's, it's right in the corner, and so I'm sure that we're all familiar with that. So May twenty thirteen, Peter D's. June twenty thirteen, the Planning Department initiated a study to rezone these properties to Mixed Use District. It's a brand-new district that was created in twenty thirteen. And then, of course, we use this master plan as a basis for justification of rezoning these properties. On February twelfth of twenty fourteen, the Planning Commission considered plans for a movie theater on Lot Two. And, um, on the following month, on March nineteenth, twenty fourteen, the Planning Commission approved plans for three hundred and thirty-six dwelling units at Everwood at the Avenue Apartments, which is the blue area. The movie theater parcel and the Everwood Apartments parcel do depend on each other for some services. One of the parcels provides stormwater quality and quantity, so they have a large pond on the apartments property. And then the, uh, formerly the location of the theater extended sewer to the apartments property, so they had kind of a, I'll misuse the legal term, but quid pro quo, where they were just, um, giving each other something. So as you know, the theater did not locate here, but it did, um, it moved into the Stones River Mall. So after, um, March nineteenth, twenty fourteen, Sterling Properties, who owns the Stones River Mall, purchased Lot Two, the theater site, to relocate the theater to the mall to help revitalize the mall. May twentieth, twenty fifteen, the Planning Commission approved Robert Rose Village West master plan. And this was important because, um, here we are. It did help break up some of the property because we knew that the theater site wasn't coming anymore. And then on June twenty-second, twenty sixteen, the Planning Commission approved, uh, site plan for Carmike Theater at the Stones River Mall, I believe it's got a different name now, but when it was reviewed, it was Carmike Theater. So that's just the background, and I think the reason that, um, I was asked to give the dates is because our Planning Department has been looking at these properties as a master planned area. And the significance of that is how does it relate to the zoning ordinance footnote? That does limit the amount of multifamily units, land and the number of units within the MU district. As you know, um, the Mixed Use District permits various types of commercial office and institutional uses that incorporates multifamily as a component of that. A few years after the creation of the Mixed Use District, the Murfreesboro City Council became aware that the MU zoned properties were becoming consumed by multifamily, and the city council asked planning staff to draft a zoning ordinance amendment that would protect the mixed-use vision for the area. And so there's a footnote that we added, uh, to the zoning ordinance that would limit the area that could be apartments for anything that's a part of a, um, master planned area. And so through the years, when Sterling has contacted staff, we've shared with them that the Everwood project has consumed all rights to multifamily, and so there weren't any available for this lot. And, um, I believe that they, they are no longer looking to develop it, but have a contract with the current applicant, TDK. Because TDK is requesting a planned development or PUD zoning, they, of course, can, um, basically, it's, with a PUD zoning, it's a tailor-made, made zoning plan. So with that book, they can, um, have whatever uses in there, they can propose whichever uses they'd like, and of course, Planning Commission and City Council ultimately will decide if they're appropriate or not. So even though there's no entitlement for apartments on the properties that TDK is looking at, with their approach to rezone it to PUD, the Planning Commission and City Council can consider adding additional apartments or, quite frankly, any type of use on this property. The, um, I'm gonna let the design team go through the very specifics of the program book in just a few minutes. I did just wanna hit a couple things. The PUD portion of the request is eleven point three acres. So the majority of the property is being proposed to be rezoned to PUD. And that's the blue area on the map. And, um, there's a lot of details in the plan that show development and phasing. One component of the plan is to have a large office building along Robert Rose Drive and have that constructed as part of the first phase, that's fifty thousand square feet. And, um, I spoke with the representatives, and that office building is intended to be truly an office building, so no restaurants, no retail, many of those uses in that large fifty thousand square foot building. Further into the site, um, there is a two hundred and seventy-four unit apartment complex that has a first floor that can allow, it says, a minimum of thirteen thousand square feet of commercial uses that could be office, restaurant, and retail. So that two hundred and seventy-four unit apartments is a majority one-bedroom, so a hundred and seventy-three one-bedroom units with a hundred and one two-bedroom units. I think the significance of that, of course, is parking, but also, um, when you have mostly one-bedrooms with some two-bedrooms, it tends to not be a place that is, um, for families, because families typically like larger units, although it would not be restricted so that families can't go there, but just by the nature of the offering of the, of the apartments, it's more of a, a model that doesn't serve families, but people who prefer one or two bedrooms. I did provide some language about traditional mixed-use design and, and those things that we normally see in mixed-use, and then, of course, the applicant will go through the changes that have been made to the plan. I did suggest that the, um, the area being zoned CH, Commercial Highway District, I believe they're taking another page from Clary Park where they rezoned some property from Mixed Use to CH. I think it's really just a good faith effort to say, we just don't want there to be any confusion in the future that makes you, that any apartments can go on the, um, the two-and-a-half acre out parcel that's in orange. And so with that, um, staff has concerns about the uses that would be allowed in CH and in the Gateway Design Overlay District. So if you do have people who live nearby and it's, uh, mixed-use, then you would want to think about the types of uses that are allowed in the Commercial Highway Zone. Of course, if it's zoned Commercial Highway, then the zoning ordinance is the regulating document and would say what uses are there. Um, the representative will have to speak to that, I think, when they get up, but during our conversation, they said that they would be looking to do some restrictive covenants to look at not allowing some of those uses that really are, um, not compatible with, uh, with nearby residences. And I, some of those that I mentioned were gas stations, automotive repair, car washes, car lots. Those type things really aren't conducive to those mixed-use walkable communities. We did get a draft traffic impact study at the request of transportation planning staff, and, um, they provided that to, um, our department. I don't, at this time, we haven't gotten, um, any comments from our transportation department, but they have confirmed that the information that they need has been provided, and, um, the applicant has included some improvements. One of the requests that I made was that, um, the Commercial Highway parcel has no timeline on when it is to be developed, however, it's got the frontage of Medical Center Parkway and Robert Rose Drive. So what you've seen probably the past several years is there have been big chunks of missing sidewalk and pedestrian links in the gateway where we have a lot of people, like a lot of dwelling units really coming into the area. Because the way that development happens in this area, some, some things are done by the developer and some things by the builder, the one who constructs the site. And the Gateway Streetscape Master Plan allows sidewalks and, and decorative lights and street trees and irrigation to be installed by the builder instead of the developer, which means, in some of these parcels, there's huge gaps for years and years and years and years. So Mr. Griffith came back in a couple years ago and, and connected some of those sidewalk, uh, made some of those lengths, but that's the city, you know, going in and spending the funds to do that as opposed to development when really we were, um, wanting them to do it. So one of the, uh, items that I brought up was this CH lot has most of the streetscape frontage and would be responsible for installing those elements that we really wanna see. And so the applicants, um, I think, will have a revision to the book where they would be, um, offering to install those with the first phase of development, which I think is really important, especially with commercial development and where you have people living. You need to have those pedestrian connections right away instead of, um, you know, ten, fifteen years down the, down the line. So with the plan development, I mentioned to you that even though the zoning ordinance wouldn't allow any apartments here, they could ask for that, and it could be within your purview to approve that as a use. You could also approve whatever number of units you believe are appropriate or, um, exceptions to our zoning ordinance or streets or, uh, our subdivision regulations or other types of documents. And so, um, we've been, our staff has been, planning staff has been making considered effort to highlight any exceptions that are being requested with the plan development, just so that you can be aware of them when you're making your decision. And so I did ask the design team, and they were quick to respond with, um, a list of the exceptions that are being requested with this plan development application. Don't look at the screen, you'll get a headache. I'm gonna go fast. Okay. And so they added a page at the end of the program book, um, that has PUD Exceptions Request Summary and lists all the exceptions that they're requesting. So the first and obvious one is for the apartments to go here, um, and the number of units, since the zoning ordinance, as it's written today, would not allow the two hundred and seventy-four units. They need exceptions to allow those. And they also are requesting, and they've provided some, a parking, uh, study in the, in the program book, but they're requiring, or requesting exceptions to our minimum parking standards. So our zoning ordinance identifies, um, all the potential uses that we can think of and assigns a parking ratio of regular off-street, uh, parking spaces. And so in that summary, they would be required to have somewhere about seven hundred and forty-two parking spaces, and the plan has one hundred and fifty less spaces. And they've provided a table in the book that you can look at that, um, and I think Mr. Taylor will probably go through, that shows that they believe that they can, um, be a little under that ratio because of the shared uses that may happen off, you know, if maybe one business is closed when another's open or people are home at different times of day. So they've got that information in the book. They've also requested an exception to the setback. They've also requested an exception to allow a, um, they're putting, they're proposing wood on some of the buildings, and certainly wood is not, um, the, the character or quality that we would see in the gateway. And I think, um, when talking to the applicants, they said that they really meant to say, uh, something that had the tone and texture of wood, but not actually wood. So we can see that happen with cementitious siding sometimes. So Nietzsche Hall is a, a name brand of, uh, fiber cement or cementitious siding, so it's a product that's made in a plant somewhere, but it's made from, um, rock, so it's harder, it's not like a plastic vinyl. And so we typically accept Nietzsche Hall as cementitious. However, commercial buildings in the gateway, the standard isn't to be cementitious siding. Commercial buildings in the gateway are brick, stone, rock. It could be, um, veneer, it doesn't have to be, you know, real brick, stone, or rock. And so I think the exception is really not saying they want wood, but that they want, um, the cementitious siding that looks like wood. And then, I think maybe they just copied one more exception that the Clary Park got, and that's to allow outdoor sales and sale of food and beverages in park space and public open spaces for temporary special events. Um, I expect that the purpose of that is for their, um, courtyard area that they have, that they can have some events there and allow that as a right, I'm sorry, I'm gonna move the pages again. Yeah, I'm almost done. So one of the, the last components that we'll hit on is, uh, the future land use map. And so the proposed future land use map, which is the current version that we're working on, does show this area to be, uh, have a land use character that's general commercial character in nature, and that, that's believed to me the most appropriate. That's the map that we're proposing currently, and it's also the map that is adopted. So both maps have the same recommendation here. And so, uh, general commercial district pertains to commercial developments as well as out parcels located on arterials and collectors, collector transportation routes, which certainly fits the project. Rather than buildings oriented to the street as in an urban setting, such as what's found in downtown, these are characterized by large parking lots surrounding the buildings. Auto-urban commercial uses include high-intensity commercial businesses that have trade areas outside of Murfreesboro and or require a large amount of land for their operation. Um, so the plan as it's proposed is not consistent with the PUD. The, the CH zoning is consistent, but the PUD apartment part is not consistent with the future land use maps. So staff just asked that the Planning Commission consider the, um, items noted in the program book prior to, um, formulating a recommendation to City Council. If you have any questions about the timeline or the application, we'll be glad to answer them, but the applicants have requested to, uh, present to you a PowerPoint presentation and provide some details of that. And then, of course, you should conduct a public hearing.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Green before we hear from Mr. Taylor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green, um, Chairlady Jones, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Matt Taylor of SEC. I'm accompanied tonight by, uh, Mr. Ross Bradley, Ken Ayers, and John David Blankenship, all of TDK. I've also got Ms. Gina Emanuel from Centric Architecture with me, and Jeff Rosiak from Gamble Design Collaborative, the landscape architects on the project, and then Mr. Brad Loomis from SEC as well. And are here tonight to present to you a, uh, request to rezone a portion of property to allow for TDK's new corporate headquarters and the vintage mixed-use project. The site is about a thirteen point seven acre site at the southwest corner of Medical Center Parkway and Robert Rose Drive. Uh, today, it's a mixture of open pasture land and wooded areas. The wooded areas are mainly to the southern portion of the project. The site today is zoned mixed-use, as Ms. Green indicated. And today, their high point of the property is generally in the center of the property and then drain, drains each direction back toward Maple Grove, the avenue, Everwood, as well as Robert Rose and Medical Center Parkway. Our proposed plan is a mixture of commercial highway zoning, which makes up almost two and a half acres of the request, and eleven point two-five acres proposed to be rezoned to PUD. Uh, of course, all of our util, utilities be underground. Uh, this would allow for a mixture of office, multifamily residential, and commercial such as retail, restaurant, and service-oriented businesses. Uh, we've proposed this PUD zoning to allow, to provide for a true mixed-use development in our gateway, to allow TDK a place to locate their corporate headquarters while showcasing their trade and create a quality, unique development in our city. The master plan shows the fifty thousand square foot office building located on the eastern portion of the site along Robert Rose Drive, and then thirteen thousand square foot of ground floor commercial retail inside of A, B, and D, um, along our northernmost east-west connector drive here. Then it also shows two hundred and seventy-four multifamily residential above, uh, that ground floor commercial as well as all of building D on the southern part. And then the two-and-a-half acre commercial out parcel in the upper right-hand corner of this master plan. Our parking distributes, uh, all of our parking throughout the site. We have oriented the parking to the sides and rear of structures so as not to dominate the public or the private, uh, drives on the site, just like the Gateway Ordinance, uh, Design Overlay District request. We've come up with our, uh, shared parking calculations, as Ms. Green said, by utilizing, uh, ITE manual. Uh, that is a national engineering standard. Um, they've actu, these are actually engineers that go out and evaluate sites similar to this, uh, see when parking is heavy demand, when it's not, um, what are the correct ratios to use at various times of the day, as well as various days of the week. So these are not standards that Matt, or John, or Brad, or the city made up. These are nationally recognized standards for projects similar to this. Uh, we, we evaluated multiple scenarios under the, under those conditions and found that the most, uh, highest demand for the parking would occur during the weekday evening period, which is roughly five to midnight. The demand on that would be a hundred percent of the residential demand, a hundred percent of the restaurant, and then twenty percent of all of our other office and commercial uses on site, and that's where the four hundred and eighty-two number came from. I do wanna stress that, um, as Ms. Green said, the shared parking analysis is dependent upon, um, does assume that people are leaving, uh, at certain times and other people are arriving, you know, behind those, uh, times. However, the analysis never assumes that one of these uses is zero. Um, you can look, I think it's page eight of the book. We have multiple uses at a hundred percent and other uses at fifty-five percent. So those vary throughout the day, and so we took the highest demand of that. This is a very similar, this is identical analysis that we did for Gateway Village on Thompson Lane. And then we did similar concepts for both Clary Park, uh, One East College. Um, and really, the whole downtown operates under this same scenario, that people are leaving and coming and going, um, at various times throughout the day. We've created a very strong pedestrian network, uh, we have. We have connections back to Maple Grove, to Medical Center, to Robert Rose, as well as back to the south to Everwood and directly to the avenue in our southwest corner of the property. And then we of course have a very strong connection and design throughout the development itself, connecting between each building and back out to those roads. We have created very wide pedestrian zones that will be landscaped very well to promote walkability, to get people out setting in these zones, to get, get people to come back and forth and continue to visit our businesses and make them want to live here. This shows a brief streetscape in front of building B. You can see the building to the left, the side, the wide sidewalk zone, seating areas directly adjoining that, then our planting strip, the sidewalk that will directly abut the on-street parking, of course the drives. And on the other side you have a sidewalk and planting strip along with that. This is kind of a ground level view back toward that ground level commercial. You can see all of those elements coming together, the uses, the architecture, the on-street parking, to make it a very desirable place to visit time and time again, to possibly live as well. The office building is a 5,000, or a five-story, 50,000 square foot building. It's on the eastern side of the site, it's shown here roughly in red. It's about 75 feet tall. It'll have a rooftop patio on the north side of the building, multiple plazas on the ground floor, both for the public and the private use. And again, our setbacks are 40 feet off of Robert, Robert Rose, as well as 10 on the side and 20 on the rear, which really don't come into play with this particular building. Our materials are very strong, very quality materials, pre-cast concrete, cast stone cladding, aluminum curtain wall. This will be the view straight along Robert Rose Drive. You can see a very well-defined entryway, very aesthetically pleasing, a lot of undulations in the roofline as well as the building plane itself. This will look north toward Medical Center and the commercial highway out parcel. You can see the upper glass floor is set back to create that rooftop, rooftop patio. This will be the view from the south side, so the Everwood side. And then this would look internal to the project. And again, on the left you can see that outdoor rooftop patio area there. And you'll notice that this building has no backside, it is true 360-degree architecture. And this is kind of a bird's eye view looking from generally the intersection of Robert Rose Drive and Medical Center Parkway. You see a very elegant building, very attractive building, something that TDK would be very proud, anybody would be very proud to call their home, and they look forward to bringing this to our gateway area. Internal to the project are our mixed-use buildings. Those are spread across A, B and C, shown here in red. These will be the buildings with the ground floor retail on the northern portion of the buildings and then residential above. These will all be four stories, approximately 60 feet in height. With the first floor being the retail and residential above, these will have about 13,000 square feet of the commercial on the ground floor. We've spread outdoor seating and plazas around each of these buildings to promote the walkability, usability, highly amenitize these buildings for visitors as well as residents. We have extra wide sidewalks and an abundance of sidewalks as well as on-street parking and large amenity areas. The largest of those is in our central corridor located between building B, C and D in the heart of the development. Here our building materials are a little different than the office building. We want these to look different, but be cohesive. And so we've used similar colors, some similar architectural language, but we've used more brick, we've used a variety of bricks, we have used some fiber cement board as well as some of that aluminum curtain wall. These uses are specifically for the ground floor retail. The office building is purely office, it does not include any of the restaurant or retail uses. A full list of these uses is inside the book, but we've tried to identify things such as you'd see in the downtown, that'd be retail bakery, a clothing store, a coffee shop, restaurant, things that people want to walk to, spend time at, they're really services for the residents, our workers, as well as the immediate surrounding area. This is looking for really the McAllisters parking lot into this central courtyard. You can start to get a feel for the ground floor retail as well as the residential above. This will be building A, which is our westernmost building. And so the upper right-hand corner, you'll see that is going to start to face building B. You'll see how that commercial starts to wrap the corner. It has a different feel than the rest of the building, so it sets apart the commercial uses. The lower left-hand corner is what will face the main roadway, so that whole bottom floor will be entirely commercial. Again, you can see how it has a different feel than the residential above and sets itself apart. This is building B, which is immediately to the east of building A. Again, consistent materials, consistent colors, and you'll notice in the lower right-hand corner, or lower left-hand corner, that's that commercial wrapping the corner again. Building C, this is our easternmost building. And then the lower elevations in this drawing are a combination of building B and C. You can get a feel for that entire streetscape along the private drive, that east-west drive. And building D located to the southern portion of the site is entirely residential. Will keep those same building materials, the ground floor will just look different than A, B and C. Will continue with the same height, same colors, the extra wide sidewalks and large amenity areas. The commercial areas here, again, these, this site will have to comply fully with the GDO, it will have to comply, provide its own open space, its own formal open space. We are going to restrict these uses through the restrictive covenant method against gas stations, automotive repair, motor vehicle sales and car washes. And we'll limit the building height here to 35 feet. We want the architect to have freedom of design, but we want to also allow for people to see these buildings to the rear, the office building, the mixed-use buildings behind these sites. We have highly amenitized the project. We have spread those amenities around, starting at building A on the western side, you'll see multiple seating areas and plaza areas. We've got our dog park planned in the southern portion of the parking lot. So we've tried to create spaces for both the commercial users as well as the residential users here as well. Of course, all of our formal open spaces and plazas will have enhanced landscaping, just like the rest of the gateway. Our largest amenity area will be in the central part of building B, C and D. This will be a large pool, fitness area, open lawn, a lot of flexibility in this space that you'll see. This is kind of a bird's eye looking from building B, looking back east. So you'll see the standalone fitness center as what, in the forefront and the pool in the background. This space is intended to be very flexible, very appealing, really to draw the people, residents out of their units, out into this courtyard, make it a very communal feel, to develop those friendships and long-lasting relationships that are going to make this a special place. Some of the flexibility that you'll see in these pictures here, you know, we've got this large event lawn area allows us to host events such as the Beer Garden. You know, if you count cornhole as a sport, do some, do some light sports. Nice fitness facility, you know, some public performances. We'll have different types of outdoor seating to engage different people's preferences. Starts to show some of the courtyard areas, some of the different textures and outdoor hardscapes, relaxation methods. Of course, we've spent a tremendous amount of time on, an effort on this internal courtyard. We're not going to turn our blind eye to the public spaces, so we've located public plazas around the perimeter where the commercial and visitors to this space will engage. You can see those letters G up above these pictures here. All of those will be seating areas for, you know, adjoining commercial users or just people waiting for their wife to get out of the clothing store, whatever that may be. We've engaged all that. We've even got an urban garden to the south side of building C. The amenities of the office building will be separate. These will be a combination again of private spaces and public spaces. So the rooftop patio labeled here as A on the north side of the building will be a private space for the office. This will be very akin to the rooftop patio at Vintage Avenue to the, over beside of the Embassy Suites, who will offer, offer some of those same tremendous views of the gateway, our battlefield areas, very special spot. The plaza areas down on the first floor, that will obviously be open to the public, encourage our workers to go out, have a seat, eat their lunch, just take a break. We plan for some water features as well as an abundance of seating areas along this Again, enhanced landscaping throughout. This site has tremendous access. We have vehicular and pedestrian access points to Maple Grove in the green here, as well as Robert, or Medical Center in the yellow. We have two connection points over to Robert Rose in the blue and then directly to the Avenue's Ring Road in the pink. Those are again pedestrian and vehicular connection points. As Ms. Green indicated, we will complete all of the streetscape improvements, that'll be sidewalks, street lighting, street trees, irrigation that are needed along our frontages of Medical Center and Robert Rose with our Phase One. That Phase One will be the office building, that would be the first building permit that we would pull. We've outlined that in the book so as not to, you know, have an empty building pad sitting there while we develop the rest of the, the project. We will also be installing a right turn lane that would start in the front of McAllisters and continue over toward Robert Rose. A portion of that is in place on our eastern segment, but we'll complete the remainder of that with this project as well. And then I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing.
Matt, can you, so I get the whole restricted covenant piece on the commercial lot, all right? So you just mentioned two or three that would be excluded?
Yes, sir.
As part of your presentation? What about like convenience stores, liquor stores, beer and tobacco stores?
So we, so I would roll, if we want to, I would say convenience store is part of a gas station, but if we want to separate those, I think that we'd be perfectly fine with that and the beer and tobacco and the liquor as well.
Okay.
Matt, I got a question just to jog my memory. With Clary Park, were they improving the intersection of Robert Rose and Medical Center?
No, they were not touching the intersection of Robert Rose and Med Center.
Was there any discussion about the office building being out closer to Medical Center Parkway on one of these closer tracks that, where you can see it a little better, it's a little more visible from the traffic coming in through there? I mean, was there any discussion about the layout or is it just this parcel and?
So we talked about it a lot internally as a team and felt like with the heights of the office building, with it being five stories, you would not lose the visibility along Medical Center. And we felt like, you know, that, we really think that is a standalone restaurant type commercial out parcel there is what we would like to see there councilman. And so we wanted to preserve the best out parcel for that future commercial user while our office is kind of pulled off of arterial roadway there. We didn't think we were losing anything from an aesthetic perspective by pulling that back one out parcel depth.
Is the, wasn't the building height you were restricting to 35 feet?
On the commercial out parcels, we were that way. And then our, our office building is in the 75-foot range, so you still have a lot of visibility. Everything else along Medical Center on that side of the street is all one stories. Even if they're a tall one story, they might be 20 feet tall.
No, I was just curious, it looks, I mean, it basically fronts to Robert Rose, you know, and kind of just seemed like we're trying to promote getting other people to come and do the same thing, it'd be, be a little bit easier, but, all right, this is curiosity.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions before we open the public hearing?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We will open the public hearing and as before, if you come to the podium, state your name and address. Limit your comments to three minutes and please make all your comments directly to the planning commission and we'll keep up with your questions, answer them at the end of the public hearing. That will open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak either for or against this item. Okay. All right. Oh. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Darren Douglas and my address is 1728 Lannister Avenue.
And I'm Wally Smart and my address is 5503, I mean 5033, that's very rough.
We are the owners of Silver Linings Concierge and our company provides door-to-door trash and recycling services for apartment complexes, luxury apartment complexes. Um, let's see, I kind of wrote me a few notes, I didn't want to forget anything. We actually have right now, our office is actually in TDK's, it's currently located in one of TDK's latest developments, which is Vintage Gateway. And we are in favor of the new TDK development headquarters. And we can speak from firsthand experience that TDK does more than build luxury apartments. They create life-changing opportunities. See, back in 2017, when we were trying to get our business off the ground, everyone was slamming doors in our faces and TDK gave us our first big break and allowed us the opportunity to provide our services for Vintage, uh, Gateway, I mean Vintage Avenue, I'm sorry. And from that one major opportunity, we have since grown to become the largest locally-owned and operated valet trash company in the entire state of Tennessee. Also, with the, with the, with the growth and expansion, it's also allowed us to expand our footprint in Florida, North Carolina and South Carolina. Not only has TDK's foresight in property development fulfilled a major need for more housing, they've also given small businesses like us a place to call our, our home, our very own, for very reasonable rates. This opportunity has not only allowed us the means to expand beyond our wildest dreams, it's also allowed us the opportunity to create more jobs in Rutherford County. As of 2021, we have 33 employees with many more in the pipeline looking for employment. So please vote in favor of this new development because it's so much more than just another building, it's about creating opportunities.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming out. Anybody else? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. I had a few questions, comments, what else, everybody else got?
I've got one question for the staff and that is, in the opening comments we said no entitlements, but then in the notes it says 86 units.
And in the exceptions, it says 70.
I think it's a difference of opinions. Staff's been fairly consistent that this property has entitlements for zero more additional apartments, either land or units. I believe applicant prefers to say that it's not really a part of the master plan and that it should just be calculated all by itself. And so if you excluded the Everwood apartments, then based on the calculations, they could, they're saying that they could have a certain number of units. So it's, it's a matter of interpreting zoning ordinance.
So the notes, who put the 86 and then who put the 70? So is that the recommendation from the staff on the 86 because they're in different places?
I just copy and pasted what they're asking for specifically. In the exceptions part, it's, that's what they put as their exceptions.
Okay.
But in the report, I'm pretty clear that the, the master plan has about 58%.
So it's, it's a matter of interpreting zoning ordinance.
So, with the notes, who put the 86, and then who put the 70? So is that the recommendation from the staff on the 86, because they're in different places?
I just copy and pasted what they're asking for specifically. In the exceptions part, it's, that's what they put as their exceptions.
Okay.
But in the report, I'm pretty clear that the, the master plan has about 58% of the master plan area already has apartments, and, and so that exceeds what the zoning ordinance allows. And so part of showing the exhibits that I showed, the two master plans, was to, was to show you that in fact Everwood is a part of the property, or was plan as a part of the property. I think probably the bigger question is, if you want this use there, the plan development can make it happen. But through the years, I think maybe just because I've been doing it for a little over 18 years, I, people reach out and talk to me about the property, and so I consistently send the same message that no units, no more units are allowed here. I think maybe without the understanding that I have of the master plans that I have and the history, somebody reading the zoning ordinance may not realize that it's a part of a larger master planned area, because you know, I have the meeting notes available to me, and I have our file cabinets that have those plans, and so because I have access to them, I, I could share that in fact, there's no more, no more apartment units up for grabs here. But I think they're asking you to consider it separate and not a part of the Robert Rose Village West master plan. Take it out, they're asking you to take it out in your mind, and so that's why the request includes the number, let's see, somewhere around.
Two seven four.
Yep.
Right there on number two, the end of section two, is that it?
Yeah.
Where they say there are 86 multifamily units. And those are, that last page of the book, if you turn the last page of the book, that's what they wrote in there. So I put what they asked for in there. But the pages before were just, I think, staff sharing our position on, on the, on where they stand as far as permitted uses in the bulk zoning.
So while you're standing there.
Sure.
I've got, I'll share an opinion later, but, so if we were to agree to approve this plan, speak to the, Matt talked about this parking study, and I mean, based upon our guidelines, we're reducing it by 150 plus or minus. So can you speak to that at all?
Not very much. I think Mr. Taylor's asking for you, that, so the zoning ordinance says that you can allow, the planning director can approve joint use of some parking spaces based on certain criteria. And so with the plan development though, you don't have an opportunity for variances, or you don't have the opportunity to go to BZA, or to have that interpretation, so we really like to have the information early on. We have been, as a department, fairly protective about parking, particularly commercial uses in the Gateway. I think we've seen that there are some of those strip centers that don't have enough parking, particularly when restaurants involved. And so what's a little bit different about this, I mean, it is a significant reduction in our minimum standards. It's not unusual for applicants, particularly in the Gateway, to ask for reductions in the apartment and, and our apartment standards. There, usually their reasoning is, they're further from the university, so they don't believe they'll have some of the scenarios that we have within our community. Years back, and I know Chair Jones, you probably remember, our apartments were severely underparked because we were having not only, particularly, and I don't like to, like just call out certain demographics, but particularly in student housing, because you would have a bedroom, and the person in that bedroom might share the bedroom periodically with somebody else, and so there would be four bedrooms, and there would be eight people, and they would all be driving. And so we really saw that there was a deficit in what our zoning ordinance required. We changed our parking ratio, we upped it. So if you compare us to other cities, ours are a little bit higher, but that's because we acknowledge that we have a large campus with a significant portion of the students who commute, either a few miles away or from surrounding towns. But we know that we really weren't, our, the developments were providing less parking than they needed based on our experiences here. So it's not unusual, Clary Park, I think a couple other developments. Actually, another one of TDK's, they, they sold it, but the one that is near Conference Center has a parking exception as well. Their justification is we're further from the university, we don't believe we're going to be all students, and that they believe that their clientele generally are a different demographic. And so it's not unusual for them to ask that, but as far as staff, we've, we've sort of reserved judgment on the reduction of 150 feet, in an effort to give them, I think, just the opportunity to explain their case to you. They really wanted to explain the, I think, this effort and time and research that Mr. Taylor put in there. It's probably true that if they really do restrict the 50,000 square foot building to just office, that will help, daytime and evening parking. However, we do know with the anomaly of the last couple years, people are working from home, so they're not actually leaving their apartment to go work, they're just working at home. And so I don't know how that plays into any of the numbers, but it, it may get a little tricky when you have retail, commercial sharing with, with apartments. Offices may be a little bit more simple to, to manage, and, and so that's probably how we see it, but, so it's not unusual for them to ask for a reduction, such as Clary Park or the other TDK apartment near the Conference Center. But it is something that, that should be outlined in the book. They have limited their amount of restaurant space, which is generally the highest, highest. Can see somebody coming up behind me on the screen. It's creepy.
It's not the first time I've been called.
Creepy. Sorry.
Can I help?
Yeah, sure. It's, it's, it's up to her, I'm sorry.
I just had one quick question, and it may be that you want Mr. Taylor to answer, and I'm not sure, but you referenced a couple of times the TDK development near Embassy Suites, yes, that had a parking exception to. And so has the city noticed that that has been a problem with that exception that was granted for those apartments?
I generally like to reach out to Mr. Balachandra, because the police have a direct line to complain to him about the impact of not having enough parking on our city rights of way. And so I would not want to give a confident answer on that. I, I've heard of, I've heard of maybe some break-ins, but I, but mostly I haven't heard any, I haven't seen, generally a byproduct of not having enough parking is the cars are on the street, and they're causing a problem. Haven't seen that, but there's a lot of undeveloped land around them as well, so I would, would rather talk to Mr. Balachandra before I confidently answer it. So if that suffices, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thanks.
I don't think it's, yeah, no. Okay. Mr. Taylor, did you have something you wanted to add to that?
Yes, ma'am. So in regards to the specific one at Embassy Suites, Mr. Bradley, for me, you know, they still track that. It's 98% occupied. They, they've never had an issue with parking there. That's obviously as important to them, if not more than the city. If they don't have enough parking, they're not going to release their spaces, they're going to hear those constant complaints. They may have sold it, that's been a recent sale, and so they have been managing that since they opened it, and are, were very familiar with any complaints that would come through there. They're very familiar with their demographics, and it's not been an issue. If we go across Robert Rose Village to their other project, Vintage Gateway, I think is what we call that one, that one parked to the city standard, and they say they have a tremendous amount of empty parking on a daily basis there. And so, again, as Ms. Green said, this part of our city just requires less parking. That's, I can't say that I disagree with the parking scenario, or the parking calculations or requirements near the university. I think they, they sound entirely correct there, and it's always hard to write a regulation that's going to cover every scenario across the city. And so I think that's what PUDs are set up for, is to right-size these. This shared parking, what is different about this, and the Embassy Suites project, is that we have, we didn't use mixed use, we were entirely just mixed multifamily residential in front of the Embassy Suites there. Here, we control all of these components, and, you know, our regulations are set up so that that office building has to park its maximum demand when it's needed. These residential have to park their maximum demand when it's needed. Our peaks just happen to be different. If you look at page eight inside the pattern book, you'll notice from eight to five, Ms. Green mentioned that things had changed over the last couple of years, people working from home, some people working from their office. You'll notice, under that eight to five scenario, we accounted for 100% of the parking demand from the office and retail, 100% from the restaurant, and still continued to provide 55% from the residential. And so that's a significant amount of the people still being at home if they're working, and that still wasn't the peak demand. It is the weekday evening time period, whenever the office is going to be finally empty, and we still gave it 20%. So again, we're very, being very conservative, and we're trying to right-fit this parking lot to what the demand is actually going to be. Our, our regulations are very suburban, and rightfully so, because we're, large portions of our city are still suburban in nature, and they're set up to handle an office building on a lot by itself, or set up to handle the commercial a lot by itself. So there are differences, and I think that's what the PUD mechanism is set up for.
Can I ask real quick if, in the 13,000 square feet of the retail and commercial space, and the allowable uses are listed on page nine, and then we just added maybe a few of prohibited uses? But are you seeing those as?
I, I guess I was thinking before that maybe some of this space was really going to be more of a, not, we-work space, you know, it's really just the office space for the residents that live in the building, or for outside people to use, but is, is part of it going to be restricted to that, or intended for that?
So the spa, the, the part in the 13,000 is going to be entirely, I mean, can a resident go down there, rent it, and open their business? Yes, but it is not the we-work space. It is entirely separate than that, correct?
Hello, Mr. Bradley?
Hi there. We may have some we-work office, that's where these gentlemen, they're, they're a part of a we-work space that we have, but we're not restricting it just to we-work office. For example, we already have interest from a coffee shop that we've used on other properties that he, he says he would like to go in this property. So we're, we're going to accommodate that space. So I, I think we're seeing more and more people, but we don't, there's not a lot of great spaces for small businesses. I think the fountains was a prime example, that they converted a lot of that to that smaller office sp, setting. But I do think we'll have some light retail. One of the, one of the things that I can share with you, as we were doing our title search on this property, there was a restriction dating back, I think to all the way back to 2006, between Cousins and Gatten, that limited lifestyle developments on this site. So I think it's one of the reasons why we haven't seen a lot of commercial development on this site, was because of that restriction. Now, obviously, that's not a restriction that the city put on, but that was a restriction between two property owners. And so I think that's one of the things that we have to take into consideration as we're looking at why are we changing uses on this site, is for that very reason. And so we spent a lot of time with our attorneys at Frost Brown Todd, and, and I've got a memorandum from them that I can share with you, that talk about our excuse, our, our uses acceptable per this, per this agreement, and they, they say so. And so everything that you see that's in our booklet, they feel like are approved uses that we could put on that ground floor.
Okay, they're approved uses, so it's just not going to be built out totally for individual office space use. I, I would like to make some comments about some of my thoughts over the last couple of weeks on this project. I've really struggled with, really how we ended up where we are, to begin with, but, you know, we went back and looked at the, the date, the timeline for the zonings on this property, starting with that 2013 master plan that was done, I guess, with Mr. Gatten or at that time, for that, for the whole, for the whole parcel. And then Everwood starts out in 2016, 2019 is then when the city changes the classification for multi-use to require no more than 25%, could be for multifamily or apartments. You know, I, I struggle with that. I, I realize that we rezoned property, and that's what we do up here every, every time we have a meeting. That's what it's all about. Is some parcel that isn't zoned either the way someone thinks is appropriate at this time, but it's certainly the way it's been zoned for a long period of time prior to If, you know, if I felt like this whole chain of events here, for the way we, we got to the zoning that's here right now, was all in place, and hadn't been all these changes all along the way, you know, I might have more of a problem with coming in and asking to change it again. I, I think they're, they're asking for a rezoning on, on a parcel, and we have exceptions, and all of that is no different than 90% of what we look at up here every time we have a meeting. So I, I think, I finally got to where I think the biggest question is, you know, do I think that it is right to have multifamily or apartments on this parcel? If that's just really what, what we're looking at. There's no question, I like this project. I, I think it's a, a nice project, I, I like, I like everything about it. And I think TDK has certainly proven that they, you know, if they say this is the project they're building, this is the project they're going to build, and this is what it's going to look like. And we have perfect examples already, even out in the Gateway. What I finally got to was if, if we had looked at the whole side of, of Medical Center Parkway, when we first zoned the avenues, and if we looked at this whole area out there as multi-use, because that's what we intended when the avenue first, first came. So if we, if we took it, and, and looked at that, the whole side from the interstate down to Thompson Lane, along Medical Center Parkway, is this the kind of look, is this what we, what we have out there now? Is this, you know, do we like what we've done so far? Do we like the way it's turned out? Do we like the amount of shopping we have versus, you know, retail space we have, and more recently, some of the apartments we have? But if you looked at that whole space as if it were a multi-use parcel from the beginning, and somewhere along the way, let's say even at the beginning, we decided 25% is the right amount of apartments to have in a multi-use space, then does this look like what we want to see out there? I have no idea whether that means that these apartments would push us over that 25% threshold, or, or not, or make us 50%. I don't know. But I, I think it's a much bigger picture than to take one parcel and decide that we're going to only have 25% of something, and then we're going to take the parcel over here, and that one can be multi-use, but only 25%. And before you know it, every parcel out there has 25% apartments on it, and if you look at that picture as a whole, how many apartments do you have in, in that? If you take the, the whole parcel and rezone it 20 acres at a time, and put 25% residential on every one of them? So I, I'm trying to look at the, everything we've done out there, and do I think this one project means we've, we really mess up by going ahead and allowing 270, 80, whatever it is, more apartments in this area?
I have some really big picture numbers for you.
Go for it.
This might help, but not restricted to Thompson Lane to the interstate.
Okay.
Which of course, I think she, Margaret Ann sort of touched on, the bubble out there and the number that are in there, but, so here's how the, here's how we sit right now, okay? So I've been working with Greg, and he's been working with his staff a lot for the last few weeks. This kind of started well before this came up, and you guys have heard me talk about, you know, big picture planning, but, so I had them go back and look at the last few weeks. you know, big picture planning, but, so I had them go back and look at the last four years of all the doors in the city, in the city of Murfreesboro, okay? And what does that mix look like? I also had them go out and look at, what is our, what's in our queue right now? Not talking about it's zoned for, I'm talking about where even, it's approved, we're looking at the plat, it's getting built, just not done. So for the last four years, out of all the doors that have been put in Murfreesboro, which is 9,232, 45 percent of them have been single-family homes, 26 percent of them have been townhomes, and 30 percent of them have been apartment doors. That's for the last four years.
For the whole city?
For the whole city. Of course, we know that a lot of the newer ones are in this, this bubble, right, from here, and, and I didn't even see, when she was talking about on the other side of the interstate, I was thinking going out Manson Pike. I didn't see those in the, in the diagram, but those would obviously be a lot more that would impact infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera. Here's the part that's what I've been trying to preach about for all this time. It took a lot of work to get here, so Greg's checked, double-checked, I've looked, we've gone back and forth, even as late as this afternoon. However long it takes to build out, the stuff that is in the queue right now, which he estimates is 12 to 15, 12, maybe out to 18 months, is 3,828 doors, 1,898 of which are apartments. 50 percent of the doors that are coming to this city in the next 18, 12, 15, 18 months are going to be apartment doors already. 50. 28 percent are going to be townhomes, and 23 percent are going to be single-family detached homes. All I've been trying to say is I'm looking for a good mix. I've said it over and over and over and over until I'm blue in the face. The council has made it extremely clear for the last at least two years, since before he was here, so at least two years, that we want to see that number coming down, not the 50 percent number, the 33 percent number, which is all the ones. I'm not talking about the, just the last five, four years here. Just being, if we kind of push that forward to the next 16, 18 months, or 12 or 15 months, however long it takes to build it, with what's in the queue right now, if we have a rolling five-year total, 35 percent apartments, 26 percent townhomes, 38 percent detached homes, okay?
Wait a minute, where are we now?
If we roll that forward and look at a five-year picture after this coming year.
We're approving the exact same thing that we've been approving for the next five years.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, with what's going to be built in this upcoming year, if I add that to the last four, okay? So it may just muddy the waters. You get the picture, if we're, if we're, if the last four have been 30, 26, and 45, and we go to 50, 28, and 23, the number gets skewed upwards.
Yes.
Right? That does not include this, that does not include Broad Street, you know, back here. I could look at the, the thing, I guess I've about halfway got it memorized now, after looking at it with him, but the, the, the bigger picture of this, and Ken, you know, you made the comment a couple of weeks ago, you know, well, every, every development has its right to get looked at on its own merits, right? And, and to some degree, I understand that, but it really doesn't have its right when it supersedes, when you end up with something, you, you can't just completely not look at what it does to the city, to the overall plan for the city. I mean, I don't, it's a shame, I, you know, TDK is a local company, and everybody wants to support them, I do, I want to support local companies and them, and I know some of the people, and all that, you know, good people, all that kind of stuff. But we're already at 50 percent that we know is in the queue. Do we really want to see that number go to 60? I mean, I, I, I just can't get right with that, when we know that the vision has been set, to say the number's supposed to be getting below 30. We can't get below 30 if we keep approving 50. And if you wonder why everybody gets on the newspaper and says, "What the heck is everybody thinking up there?" And everybody keeps approving all this stuff, that's it. I don't hate them, I don't dislike who's bringing it, I don't, you know, none of that, it's just, all I try to argue for is a good mix. The council has said what their vision is to see that number come down. This and that are 600 units alone, that puts us at 30 in a normal year. And that's in addition to the 2,000 we've already got coming online. I mean, staff doesn't support it. It's not consistent with the land use map, old one or the new one. It goes against the vision that the council set. It's hard for me to even believe we're here, frankly, but here we are. So, I can't, I mean, what, what are we? The only thing I know, look, I, I, I have some pause about this, as y'all, I mean, as far as the, this whole entitlement thing, I, I've not, you know, I understand the essence of what was happening, I understand the essence of why the ordinance was put in place, and it was frankly to keep this zoning from ever coming in front of us, and others. However, with that being said, if they asked for 86 units, there's zero chance I wouldn't say okay. I'm just telling you that, because I think, okay, look, maybe was it a little, could you call it unfair if we put the mixed use, the 25 percent limitation on after the buyer bought it, that's trying to sell it now? I mean, we can argue it, or whatever, I'm not going to argue it. I'd say okay. And as a matter of fact, I'd probably even give a 50 percent kind of bonus number, because they're local. And I'd probably go along with that, but that's a long way from 274.
160.
It's 120, 130, 50 percent, not 100 percent.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm hung up on, too. I think, you know, I kept hearing entitlement, entitlement, and then earlier this week, I said, "Okay, well, let's start at the beginning, what entitlement?" And when I got into it, I said, "Oh, okay, so maybe they are entitled to 86." And then I said, "But why are we building 250 then?" And, and I think that's, that's what I've run into the last week, as well, is, you know, what are we arguing about, when, when no matter which way you argue it, it still doesn't equal 256? Or 274, sorry, 274. So, the number of units is, is my biggest concern, but I love the corporate headquarters. It's beautiful.
Yeah, amen.
I think, I'll give an opinion. Man, I understand everything Rick said, and, and the guidance that the city council is, is trying to plan for with respects to the city itself. I still am a big believer on looking at, I mean, that's the whole reason why there's a, a PUD opportunity, to see if, if the particular plan has its own merits, and everybody's going to have a differing, differing opinion, as we've already heard, with respects to that. But I, I think that if the plan has merit, then it, it needs to be discussed, just as we are discussing. The merit that I see is that we're, you know, it's a kind of a give and take here. We're going to get a very nice first-class office building, which is exactly what we were looking for when we were putting together Medical Center Parkway and the GDO. So we got that. We are definitely, percentage-wise, number-wise, outside the lines with respects to what the city is looking for, with respects to apartment door, apartment doors, apartment units, no question. I think that based upon the fact that, that we do have a apartment developer who wants to, to show the, the best product that they can, has, it's a matter of discussion, that it is, that has some merit. It is, it's, in essence, why would they build something that would be to the detriment of Murfreesboro, when they're going to use it as a, a way of gaining more clients across the country? So that, that piece of the puzzle, I'm, I'm past that. I think that they're going to do the best they can to keep this development in pristine condition. You know, as my children grow up, they're in their late twenties, this, this type of development, and even folks in their thirties, this is exactly what they're looking for. And so, that, at that age, if you're not in a professional setting, or a professional job, you can't afford to pay the rent in these apartment complexes, and we can argue about affordable housing and all that kind of stuff. The only issue that I, I'm for it, the only issue I have is, you know, are we decreasing the number of parking spaces to the point that we're going to have a problem in the future? And, and I think that's an arguing point in and of itself, but I, I respect everybody's opinion that's on this board, but on face, and I, I'm, I'm for it.
So, so one other way to look at this, too, I meant to say this earlier, because it's, it's important, is the why these numbers matter, these percentages, right? If we got 23 percent of our doors are going to be houses, I guess somebody could argue, is it a matter of opinion? Like, okay, is this what people really want? You know, and, and are we providing enough of that? Right? So, if we feel like maybe a few people move out of an apartment into a house, they want to have kids, they want to have a yard, throw ball with their kid, whatever it is, right? That means less than two out of every 10 families that move to this city in the next 18 months have a chance to have a house. What, I mean, what do we think that?
But can I ask, your 23 percent, that is of the new units, that doesn't take into account our existing?
That, no, 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 this, yeah, that's the new, that's of the new, of the new things that are built.
And of the existing that we have already on the ground in the city of Murfreesboro, what's our percentage?
We don't have all that yet. But there's people already living there, so it doesn't really incorporate the growth piece.
Yeah, they move, they, you know, that's, that's the whole idea.
I mean, if we're, if we're declining in population, like Nashville, that matters probably more, but the point being the direction we're headed, actually, we do know, is about 33 percent are apartments, of all.
The whole city.
The whole city. Yeah, per, per the census. So, it's, you know, that's why this is important. I mean, you know, so, frankly, here's the deal, I, I, I think, well, no, I'm really making sure everybody's got a chance. I'm not going.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I agree with you, everything should be looked at on its merits, and I, I think that's, that's what I'm trying to do here, in that I, I don't need to debate whether or not Murfreesboro needs more apartments, or needs more density. I, I don't even think that's the, the issue at hand here. The issue at hand is, this is what wants to be built, and when we look at the proposal, these are all of the exceptions that, that are being asked of the planning commission, and, and it's a lot of exceptions, it's a lot of big-ticket items for me. You know, it's not the difference in 200 parking spaces, and we need 200, and they want to supply 180. Okay. You know, it's 150 parking spaces, and, and I'm not sold on the shared parking agreement. You know, I, I think shared parking agreement should be reserved for a Mother's Day Out program next to a bar. Okay, well, those are usually different hours of the day, right? But if we have a, a urban living right next to commercial, I just can't be convinced that we're not going to run out of parking spaces there. And then we run into the whole, even if they are entitled to a 25 percent building capacity there, that's significantly less than the number they're asking for. So, you know, I, I'm not anti-apartment or anti-development by any means, I'm just looking at this project on this parcel, with these exact merits, and I don't, I don't think I can support it.
You got to talk about infrastructure, too, by the way.
It is about infrastructure, but it's also about this parcel, excuse me, this project on this parcel, in the greatest area, or in the, one of the areas in the, in the, in the city that we think that we hold most dear, and I think the level of this project, and I was originally a no on this, because of the apartments, but I think the level of the project, and what we've seen TDK do around our, our city and our community, and we've seen them be good stewards in our community, I think that, that, that draws some water. And so I would agree with, with Ken, that I believe based on this project's merits, that some of those exceptions are just not as important in my book. I, I would, I would tend to be for this, this, this project.
So I'll, I'll give my comment, because I, I think from my standpoint, I look at it from the standpoint of, if we're going to give, let's say we voted it in, and we're going to give TDK the opportunity to do this, this is much more than, there's no secret, right? There's no secret that we're giving more than what's allowable, right? So from my standpoint, I serve on this board, but I also serve on the industrial board. And with the industrial board, I have to look at what the opportunity is of the office. And I will tell you, after talking to the, the chamber, one of the biggest deterrents for jobs is we don't have suitable space. So for me, it's, it's a, looking at the balance of, well, am I, am I willing to give this to get something else that's going to bring something to the city? And what I looked at was, can I come up with a net zero? Can I come up with a, they're adding apartments, but they're giving us the opportunity to add the same number of jobs or more? And I told the guys over at TDK, "Hey, I've got more homework to do, I've done that homework, and in my homework, it says, we probably do need to lower the apartments by some level, and increase the office, so that we balance and come to a net zero." It's not a ton on each one, but there needs to be some balancing done, so that if we're going to give something on one side, then we get something from the city that we really, really need. Office is something that is definitely needed, and I think if we go back to the table and sit down and say, "Hey, what's the balance?", so that we come up with a net zero, then I think we can come, come to an agreement of something that works for them, and something that works for us. It's a give and take.
I can support that, Lauren, I, I agree. I can, I can play a zero-sum game, but not, I, I don't know that the, it balances out to equal zero for me on this exact project.
Well, today, I will tell you, it doesn't, but it's not as far off as you think. When you, when you look at the number of, hey, they're going to add, on this parcel, they're going to add 200 and something apartments, how many jobs can fit in the space that's not occupied by TDK? So TDK is going to occupy 16,000 square feet. I'm eliminating that from the space, because there's no new jobs created by that space that's existing. If I look at the other 34,000 that they're adding, how many jobs can fit in that space to make it a net zero? My calculation says we need an additional 8,000 to 10,000 square feet on the office, and a reduction on the apartments.
Is there 34,000 of open office space? And they're only taking 16,000?
I thought it was 13.
I thought it was flipped around.
No, 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 so.
33,000, it's 11,000 floor plate, per floor. So you get up to our section, and those are 9,000 each.
Say that again.
So, they would be 18, and then, then 33 of open, if I heard those numbers correct, or 17, if I did my math.
Nobody's already moving into the other 33?
I think they've had some potential, they've not had anybody sign on, on the line with them yet, councilman.
So, for me, I'll, I'll give you the numbers I came up with. The numbers I came up with were, there's somewhere around 40,000 square feet to create about 234 jobs that could fit in that space, and 234 apartments that you could put over there, to come with a net zero game. We, we need to look at the real need for jobs, as we look at, you know, the growth in the city, we need jobs in the city. So, the only way you get the jobs, if you want the office, you got to have office space if you want to get those types of jobs, and we don't. In this city, we don't have the office space.
I think everybody's talked, and I, sorry.
Not sure we're quite finished yet.
All right.
But, sorry, Matt, because I know we hadn't heard from all the ends of the table, but I did want to just say, in regards to this, our, our references to the exceptions, I kind of had to ask some about this earlier this week. You know, every planned development that we've ever approved... development that we've ever approved comes to us as a planned development because they're asked, I mean, they can't fit what they want into the zoning, the, the current zoning. So it requires the planned development so they can get the setback that they want, get the density they want, what, whatever. Um, it's just very recently, and I appreciate very much, that the staff has started listing out for us exactly what those exceptions are versus what it would be within the current zoning. Uh, it does make it much easier for us to look at it like that. But we, you know, I, I, I'm sure there've been plenty of things that have gone right over my head before that I should have known that they could do that in the zoning and, you know, or they couldn't have done that in the current zoning. And they're getting to do it in this planned development that we just proved. And I probably missed that because, but some staff member knew that. And now they're pointing it out to us. And I appreciate that. I think that's just one extra thing they're doing for us. But the list of exceptions doesn't, you know, that, that's what a, a putt is all about, is, is they're, they're asking for exceptions to an existing zoning. And so that, that's, that's why we have, that's what it's all about. That's the reason for it.
I mean, is that why we have planned developments? Or is it to get certainty? I mean, is it, is it a mechanism?
Definitely.
No, no, I mean, from the city's perspective.
They're going to get those extra things they're asking for, then they've got to require, you know, they've got to do the things that we say they're going to do.
I guess my point is, I understand from a, you know, a developer's side of the table, the reason for a planned development is to ask for, yes, for, for exceptions. From a city planning side of the table, is that the reason?
A give and take.
All right. So, so I, I, I will say, just, uh, one other kind of thing, I think that it's important from a planning perspective. And I hope that you guys will notice that I'm trying to think and talk on, you know, macro levels here, you know, that, that, that are, that I feel like sort of is encompassed by good planning, right? I mean, you know, that, to me, you gotta have a little vision of what's gonna, what's out in front of you and what this decision impacts the future. Um, you know, so I, I also think one of those tenets is consistency and fairness. And, you know, the fact that we've kicked off a bunch of other people from even having this discussion, um, the fact that we've just had another large development come across the street that we use these same exact arguments for, just in a different way, that ended up at less than 25%. Um, I think it achieves neither. So I, it's.
My, my only argument to that.
I think you're going, I think we're going the right direction, by the way.
My only argument to that is, across the street, we didn't get any office. We didn't get it.
I think, yeah, I think we actually did.
We got, yeah, but it's, it's not real. It's, it's, for me, I'm not going to entice a mid-sized company to come into that space because we don't have a big enough space for it. In this space, I can go entice a mid-sized company to come and take up a floor. Uh, but like I said, the balance, for me, the balance is off. So I can't be for it exactly like it is, but I can be for the project.
Hey, Ross, can I go ask a couple of questions?
I did pull up the zoning ordinance that has the purpose of planned development regulations, since you asked. How quickly I was able to do that, Sneddon. There's a lot of information. I can read it for you, or you can read it on your own. But, um, planned development regulations, the purpose intent are specified in the zoning ordinance, is the purpose of these planned development district regulations are to promote, promote flexibility in development design and to permit planned development diversification in the location of structures, to promote the efficient use of land by permitting a planned arrangement of buildings, circulation systems, land uses, utilities, to preserve existing landscape features and amenities until utilize such features in a harmonious fashion, to encourage the total planning of land tracts consistent with adopted long-range plans, to permit the use of new and innovative land development techniques while sharing protection of existing adjacent development, to encourage the functional and beneficial use of open spaces and to preserve natural features of development site, to promote creation of a safe and desirable living environment for residential areas characterized by Unified Site and Development Program, to permit the creation of a variety of housing types compatible with surrounding development to provide greater choice of types of environment and living units, to promote the provision of attractive and appropriate locations for business and manufacturing uses and well-designed developments, and the provision of opportunities for employment closer to residence with a reduction in travel time from home to work, to provoke, to encourage the revitalization of established commercial centers, to promote the diversification and uses permitted and variation in the relationship of use of structures, open space, heights of structures and developments intended for cohesive unified projects, to encourage design and the development of land that is of a higher quality than is possible under the, the regulations otherwise applicable to the property, and to promote the significance of architectural and aesthetic improvements and details in atypical developments. So the answer is yes, yes, Ms. Jones, yes, Mr. LaLance, Councilman LaLance, both things are true.
Can you start back at the beginning, Mark?
With pleasure. Oh, you don't know how much I enjoy the camera.
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bradley, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
All right. So we've come to the idea that there's approximately 33,000 square foot of Class A that you're not going to occupy metal of the center. How much, how large is the Class A that you're moving out of? How much is Class A, does that open up moving out of that spot?
We're, we're in 15,000 now, uh, of which we have a tenant on the ground floor that's about 7,500, uh, and then we have the 7,500 above. So, so we're basically at 7,500 is what we're moving out of. So we're, we're moving out of 7,500 into 18,000. So we're not adding new jobs, but we're improving an existing business in town. I think there's some value there, right? Um, and then we'll back, backfill that 7,500 that's there on Church Street, just dropped the road, uh, with another tenant. We own that building. So we, we intend on keeping that building.
All right. And then 274 units as it sits now. And I know I wrote down the mix last time, but I can't find it where I wrote it down. One bedroom versus two bedroom units?
We're 63% one bedrooms. So, uh, was it 173?
173.
And 101? I told Rick I could, I could change it to 20, but I'm going to need more two and three bedroom units. In, in all seriousness, that's where we're seeing the demand. And I would love, Rick, for us to sit down and look at those numbers. We're not seeing them. Um, you know, the numbers we're seeing, uh, are, are different than what, what those numbers are. Uh, and I would love to kind of see, because we look at, we look at numbers every day. Matt's going, we're going to share the numbers. We look at a lot of numbers. Um, and this is pretty interesting. Some of y'all may have seen this. If you got to come to listen, listen to my lecture at the hangar on, uh, on the apartment industry, some of you may have seen some of these. This was a, uh, I don't know that you all saw this one here on the front. I thought we'd, I thought we would be interesting to do kind of a comparison with Murphysboro and the surrounding areas. And so often I hear the, the statement, we're going to, if we keep this up, we're going to turn into Antioch and with the number of apartments. And I, I think that's such a, such an uneducated statement. Um, when you look at your, our population, you know, we, we, we cited our sources here, so we didn't just kind of pull these. One source we didn't have on here was CoStar. We pull a lot of data from CoStar and you can, you'll see that on the very back page. Um, we have a population of approximately 100, or 136,366 people. Um, we often get compared to Franklin or like to compare ourselves to Franklin. Franklin's got seven, 77,939 on their population. And so when you look at our ratio of populations, number of units, Franklin actually has a higher population of apartments to, to residents. So Franklin has, for every 13 people that live in Franklin, they have one unit. Now, let me, let me paraphrase this by saying, what I'm looking at here is not the last four years. I'm looking at the last 15 years of apartments. So Rick, Rick's kind of smiling at me thinking, we have way more than 7,000 apartments in Murphysboro. And he's right when he's thinking that. Uh, these are, these are what we call, what CoStar classifies as four-star properties. So these are properties that are built within basically the last 15 years. Um, there's about 18,000 properties listed on CoStar that are in Murphysboro. Um, but that, we're, I'm just focusing on things that are built in the last 15 years. Um, one of the things that, that you'll see, and I'm, I'm kind of curious to see some of that data about all those units that we have coming online, because we haven't seen it and I haven't seen it coming up. I'm curious to sit, hear what you guys have approved from a planning commission standpoint, because I would think the site plans would have to come through you all before they get constructed. But what I'm seeing in my pipeline is 384 units under construction, which is essentially the property that's under construction across from World Outreach Church. Um, there's also the Clary Park deal that's the 300 units that you'll see under the speculative. And where I think my dad is correct is, if you look at the center column where it says rent growth, the rent growth in Murphysboro from a, during a 12, 12-month period is up 24.6%. So if you're an average person and you're living in one of these 7,000 units in Murphysboro, your rent went up about $320 last year, per month, $320. And there's a lot of reasons, but one of the main reasons that I, that I'm attributing to that is the lack of supply that we have coming on in the market. And so I know we can sit back and we can say we have a lot of land in Murphysboro that's zoned for multifamily, but I'm not seeing it on our supply. And, and this, a lot of this data I'm getting from the National Apartment Association, what they track on a, on a monthly basis, um, is, is supply coming into the market. I'm not seeing that on, on the supply. And I'm certainly not seeing it in the percentage of rent growth that went up $320 last month. And I think if you reach out to a lot of renters in our community, uh, you'll see, you're, you're hearing a lot of people, my rent went up, you know, 300 some, even if you go to, it's been really interesting. Some of y'all had, uh, sit down and we looked at three-star properties. So these are four-star. If you drop it down to three-star properties, those rents went up $200. So those are, those are, those are not new properties that are being built. And so is this, is this property that we develop, is it going to solve the affordable housing crisis? Absolutely not. But I think we have to take a holistic approach to this and say, hey, maybe we need to determine how many units a year do we need to start approving so that we don't begin to have an affordable housing crisis? Because our rent growth is, is, our rents are not as high as Franklin, but our percentage rent growth is higher than Franklin. And I have to believe it's because Franklin's got 1,849 units under construction today with a planned pipeline of over 3,000 units that are in the planning stages. And why is Franklin doing that? Mr. Russell, you mentioned it. Franklin's adding a ton of jobs and they recognize that they can't bring companies to town if their employees don't have a place to live. And guess where the first place they land is? It's in our properties. It's in our properties. And it's the same reason Franklin's doing it. So I think we need to step back and kind of look at that and see what's, what's going on around our area and how do we match up, especially from an affordability standpoint. If you go to the very last page, so, so the second page, I have a breakdown of what is speculative going on. And so you can see those units that are planned. So there're no, there's no mystery to this. I, I've got them listed here. And, and so you can see them. You go to the very last page, and this is specific to apartment data in Murphysboro as of April of this year. You can see the average rent jump that I talked about, that $320 a month rent increase. You can see what that graph looks like. It looks like a, a roller coaster that is going up a lot. And I just bring it to your attention, not just for our project, but as, as, as planning commissioners, we have to be aware in our community, what are we doing to our community? I know we have a lot of concerns and we, and I read, I read the same Facebook, uh, articles that y'all said yesterday that we've got a lot of apartments. That, there's, that's a perception out there. But the numbers show me we don't have enough if it, for, for people, if we build a school, where's a school teacher going to live? You know, if you're, if your kids, uh, Mr. Halliburton, you mentioned your kids being in town. If your kids want to move back to town, where are they going to live? Right? I mean, they're, they're, the cost of what they were going to have to pay because we're not producing the supply that others, other, other areas are producing is, is a hardship. You know, if, if you look at these numbers, under, under 12-month absorption, the prior period, we absorbed 1,011 units. This last period, we only absorbed 459, and it was because we just simply didn't have the supply. So we're in the red there. We're also in the red under construction, where the prior period, we had, we had 588 units under construction. Now, remember, we absorbed 1,100. We only had 588 under construction. Now we're at 384. And next year, Clary Park is the 300 units that y'all keep mentioning. So I just mention it to you because this is CoStar data. This is, this is what all the real estate professionals are using to, to do matrix. If you're underwriting projects, this is what, this is what people are using. And it's the most accurate data I can get. We, we pay thousands of dollars per month to give access to this data. And it's the best I can get my hands on.
For free, for free. I'm going to list off all the 1,898 units that are coming to me.
I would love for you to email them to me.
It's, it's the loss of Gateway Commons, Aris behind 2Js, College Point Center on Greenland, Victory Station, we know where that is, Stone Bridge, One East College, Clary Park, Shalom, and Vantage Lot Two, which used to be the Edge or something like that. It's 1,898 units. Those are, some of these, you know, have not been counted in their COs or whatever. So they're not counted in the 600 that we brought on in 2021.
I would say if we've got so much, if so many units come online, why is our rent up 24%? I mean, it's higher than anywhere, anywhere, anywhere in Milton, Tennessee. I mean, the numbers are what they are.
Hey, Ross, can you get me these, or email me these same numbers, but with total units, not just with Class Four?
What's that? How many, what units are associated with this?
Yeah, like instead of just the, the top level, the icon, the Class Four type apartments, total apartments, like what does Murphysboro look like with all, all levels?
Take everything, take all 18,000 and?
Right. And, and that way we can compare. I mean, we may have less Class Four than Franklin does per, per population, but what does it look like when you take into account?
Yeah.
The Class Three, Class Two, and compared that to the other areas.
Yeah, we certainly can.
You know, and, and look, I, we spar a little bit and it's, it's a little different when it's in public. But I, you know, the, the one thing that's true about this is that, you know, the same, in the same way that he says, and I understand why he says it and I get it, that, you know, if these people want to move here, where are they going to move? If we're not building any houses, their danger is not going to be moving into houses. If we don't plan for having any houses built, they're not going to be able to move into houses. And when the doctors come here that do want to have a house with a family, they're not going to have a place to build.
I happen to agree with Rick for sure on that. I, we are not building enough housing stock. And we definitely are not building enough single-family homes. The challenge is, what do we need to do to spur that growth? I'm not saying we, apartment, the growth in the city is more than I think all of us can get around our brains. We need apartments, but we need a lot more single-family homes. And at the end of the day, you know, to me, not building the single-family homes is taking away the American dream for a lot of kids.
And I live there every day.
I'm looking at both of these. When I look at this project, we need jobs for those kids. So the, the balance for me for this project is, is they're bringing Class A office space. If this was a whole apartment deal, I'd have to have some pain over it.
So can I say something too? I mean, look, I, I think that there's a workable, it seems to me that there's a workable solution here. We can fix the parking. We can fix the numbers. We can fix the office space. It's just going to take some adjusting is what it sounds like to me. It's, it's sort of, I mean.
And I'll tell you, the other side of that.
Whether it's just a yes or no, may not be the right.
I've been trying to say that for 30 minutes.
The office, office going up and the apartment's going down.
I was going to invite you back to the podium. I apologize.
That is entirely okay.
Because I know you have something to say.
There's way more important people here than I am. So I, I think that we here, we need to work on a few things. And so we would like to request a deferral if that's amenable to the commission.
Second.
We just had a motion to defer and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Great discussion. We appreciate everybody being here. Appreciate all the information. And we will move on to our next item. Next, we have a zoning application for approximately 238 acres located along Northwest Broad Street to be removed from the GDO1 zoning overlay district with approximately 20.8 acres remaining in the GDO1 overlay. City of Murphysboro is the applicant. Ms. Rush, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner. Give me a moment. I didn't realize there were so many pages. All right.
I just got that.
I wondered why you couldn't.
All right. Okay, so this is zoning application.
There are a paper on you right there.
2022409. The property is located along the east side of Northwest Broad Street and southeast of Interstate 840. Previously, the city had processed a petition to annex the property into the city limits and to zone it CH and have a GDO-1 overlay district. And it was for the development of the Legacy Sports and Entertainment Complex. The Planning Commission held a public hearing in February, and the city council held their public hearing on both these applications on April 21, 2022. The zoning and annexation will become effective this week on May 6 for those applications. This current zoning application proposes to remove the GDO overlay district from the majority of the property and retaining it to only the portion along the Northwest Broad Street frontage, as you can see along this map. This area that would be inside the GDO would be approximately 20.8 acres out of the total of 258 acres of the property. The purpose of this request is the Legacy Sports facility would consist of outdoor athletic fields and large athletic buildings, as well as smaller concession and restroom buildings. And the buildings that would be most visible would be those constructed adjacent to Northwest Broad Street, would be for commercial retail, restaurant, and hospitality uses. This amendment is, the purpose is to allow a greater degree of flexibility with the development and the design of the recreational facilities than the GDO-1 zoning would allow. The Murfreesboro Design Guidelines would still apply to the development, and these would allow for wider range of permitted building materials, site design, and it also allows the Planning Commission authority to deviate on certain guidelines if there's a better design. Given the nature of the athletic fields and large buildings, several of the GDO regulations would not be practical, and specific examples were provided in the staff report. And I'll just go over a few of those briefly. The GDO has specific building materials required, as we heard on the last item, for brick, stone. Those types of items are really difficult when you have a very large building. And so the Design Guidelines does have a wider range of permitted exterior building materials, still masonry, but it does allow, again, for a better design, the Plin Land Commission has that authority then to review those things and make sure it's consistent with what the city is looking for. Regarding landscaping and open space, the GDO requires additional planting material in several areas, including perimeter planting. It must achieve a minimum ACI, which is Acquired Caliber Inch per acre. Based on the large expanse of this property, it would be very difficult to meet. And additionally, trees planted in close proximity to the athletic fields could also be a maintenance issue due to shedding of leaves. The GDO also requires shrub planting in addition to what is required outside of the GDO district. It's more than what is required outside that area. The bulk of the site would be developed with athletic fields, and this standard would be very difficult to achieve and possibly impact the amount of developable area of the property. Temporary uses, the GDO prohibits the use of temporary tents. With athletic facilities, they often do have tents for events where they're selling concessions, sometimes retail merchandise, drinks, and those are things that are very common with this type of use. The GDO also prohibits the use of outdoor vending of merchandise. And like I said, with or without the tent, that is something that's very common with these types of facilities. And the GDO also prevents the use of woven fence material and chain link fence materials. And the woven fence material is something that is, as we all know, is consistent with what you see in athletic fields. The outdoor athletic fields are baseball, softball, as well as soccer and the pickleball The last meeting, the Planning Commission requested information regarding the conceptual Legacy Sports Site Plan and the overall layout for the subject property. See if I can scroll down to that. There was a copy that was included in the staff report. So this is the most recent concept plan. See if I can zoom in a little bit. So as you can see, along this section of the northwestern portion is where the athletic fields are. The river is in the northern area. And Northwest Broad Street is here at the bottom of the page. And you see the blue buildings, those are the conceptual areas where they would have those retail, commercial restaurants and hotels. The red buildings are the indoor athletic and entertainment venue, and then behind that, those are the pickleball fields. These buildings are large because they do house, I don't recall if it was 60 or 80, indoor basketball courts that can be converted to volleyball courts. Another building has the gymnastics, where they'd have gymnastic competition, can also be converted into cheerleading competition. They rent out the indoor space sometimes to like the home and garden show, and RV shows will be there as well. So those buildings are large, and they do provide a variety of types of uses. As noted in the staff report, the proposed Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, which is currently in a proposed state, indicates that employment generating is the most appropriate land use for this subject property. And urban, commercial mixed use is what is recommended under the current Future Land Use Map. It's in staff's position and opinion that the zoning request is consistent with both the proposed and the future. The future, I'm sorry, the proposed Future Land Use Map is employment generating, and it does allow athletic or recreational types of uses that are going to create jobs. And Legacy has indicated that this facility is estimated to have at least 1,200 new jobs for this area. Staff recommends that the 238 acres be removed from the GDO zoning overlay district because the GDO Design Guidelines would not be appropriate for the athletic fields. Make sure my number's right on that. Yes. And that the GDO zoning would remain on the 20.8 acres of the property located along the frontage for Northwest Broad Street. The Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing and discuss the matter, and then formulate a recommendation to the city council. The city is proposing this rezoning, so I'm happy to answer any questions on behalf of the applicant. Legacy, Civil Engineer, one of the ones on their team is also here. So if you have any questions specific to their concept plan, I would defer to Mr. Matt Taylor. Thank you.
Any questions before we open the public hearing?
Yes.
We got an email, and I talked to Matt about this earlier, so he already knows what I'm asking. We got an email yesterday about soccer fields being built in the floodway close to the riverline, if there was going to be any kind of extra barrier between the soccer fields and, say, Oakley or River Bend. Can you give us an answer on those things?
And the second question in that email was regarding, would they need to raise the elevation of the soccer fields, et cetera? And then would that cause additional flooding on the other side of the river? So if you can address that, we'd appreciate it.
Matt Taylor from SEC. So the, this is not going to be a perfect, but whoops. Floodway is generally like that. It follows the bank of the river. It's a very steep bank, there's a rock bluff along a large portion of that. So the floodway does not really encroach into our property very far. All of our facilities, I was doing some scaling this afternoon after I got the question, all of our facilities are 50 to 150 feet away from the floodway itself. And so we will not fill the floodway at all. City's ordinance will not allow us, FEMA will not allow us to do that, so we will not fill that. And so we will not increase the flood elevation either with what we have to do on the site. So all that will be in compliance with the city's floodplain management ordinance.
Thanks, sir.
And so basically, you're saying there isn't anything that you all would be doing with the development of this property that would cause an increase in the flooding on the other side of the river?
Correct. That is basically how the city's floodplain ordinance is set up, is to protect not only us and our facilities, but also neighbors and their facilities. So it's set up the exact same for that purpose.
Wasn't there a question about distance from the ball fields to the property line?
She said, I know, and this is, these are questions from Susan Vaughn. She said the soccer fields look exceptionally close to the river. I know there is an area of 50 feet from the river that will remain untouched, but are they going to add additional landscaping as a barrier to the properties on the other side?
I thought I remembered us talking a much larger distance from the river to the fields.
So I know all these are in the, the closest one is going to be right there, and it was generally in the neighborhood of about 50 feet. These over here are more in the 150-foot range from the top of the bank through there. And so I think what we'd said at our previous planning commissions was that the buffer would be at least 50 feet for the city's water quality protection area. In addition, we had a 60-foot buffer for TDEC. We would likely have some perimeter trees that would be planted through there as part of the city's zoning ordinance. And I believe that we'll have the commercial highway. We would also have to plant a landscape buffer, or at least preserve enough trees that is equivalent to that landscape buffer. So I think those fields have been generally in the same location for a while now. I don't think they've had significant shifts.
And just as an aside, during the site plan review process, the Planning Commission has the ability to place additional conditions on the site plan or require additional measures to mitigate any negative impact on adjacent residences. So that, you know, that could be additional screening that would be within your purview during the site plan review process?
Just out of curiosity, Matt.
No, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Warren. Sorry, buddy.
I was a little confused in the 50 feet and the 60 feet. Is it additive?
No, they're, they're, they kind of overlay each other, so.
Okay, got it.
One of them is a temporary during construction only, that's TDEC's. The city has a permanent 50-foot that has to be maintained in a certain manner.
I got it.
Are you still, do you still have that map up in front of you, the layout?
Yes, sir.
That, I don't know what you'd call it, that at the top of the diamond soccer field?
Yes.
You see the one, the one that would be closest to the river? Is it still 150? Yeah. Is it still 150 feet away from the river? I mean, I think when people look at this, it's hard to put that in scale, right? I mean, to understand, that's a much bigger distance than it looks like on paper.
Yes, sir.
It's hard for me.
It's generally, it's in that range, yes, sir. It may be 140. I was just measuring on a half-scale, so.
But like the ones down there to the left of the tip?
Those are even more.
I mean, those aren't 150.
That's right.
I mean, they're bigger, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I think this drawing was a 300 scale, and so 1 inch equals 300. And so on a PDF, it gets very hard to measure those.
So really, it's just one property affected by the 50 feet?
Yes, sir. And there's a, there's a pretty good tree row when I was out. We visited with several across the river. There's a pretty good tree row through there. There's a mix of cedars and deciduous and things like that. And thankfully, you know, this portion of West Fork is a pretty wide portion. It's not a small river by any stretch of the imagination at this particular location. And those houses set back up in here, somebody once told me that the best distances, or best buffer is distance, so we have that plan in our favor as well.
That's the side, though, that already floods, right? I mean, you know, you've got the bluff over here, they already experienced flooding because they got the flat side.
Yes, sir.
And they're the ones that have the floodway in their yards, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I mean, I'm not arguing, I'm just kind of, I think that's the way I got it in my head, just how I remember that area.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Okay, we will open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak either for or against this zoning application. Okay. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Comments, questions?
I think we all kind of had some questions about this, right? I mean, am I remembering this right, as far as the, getting rid of the gateway overlay? That whether or not we were, you know? Yeah, you know, that obviously, like the chain link was okay, but I think one of the things that I said that I think we might have had some, more people might have felt this way was, was like, you know, the edges of the property, making sure that we're not, you know, we don't have, for example, I'm just using the easy example, the chain link fence out there showing on the edge so that the next developer on the, you know, the parcel next door is looking straight into that. I think that kind of came about when we talked about that loop road that sort of gave me a little.
Yeah, yes, sir. The loop road is generally there, and so the only place that you really have any fields directly touching neighbors is going to be back here where you're backing up to the wastewater plant. I don't think they'll care. And then along this side, which is open farmland, and so on both.
For now, though, I mean, you know what I'm saying? That's.
Yes, sir. And I say that because for now, these are zoned residential. We're going to be zoned commercial highway, so we're going to have to have a landscape buffer all along, on the outside part of our fence. I've got to clean my finger.
She's not going to quite be GDO level.
Right.
I guess what I'm.
Well, the landscape buffer would have been, it would have been, that would have been unchanged, whether it's GDO or whether it's not GDO. And so you're still going to have, I think it's a Type C or a Type D, so it's still a very dense.
D.
D. And so it's our second most dense version because everybody else is still zoned residential out here. So it's still very protective of neighbors in that instance, Councilman.
And so then the only thing, if between the time that Legacy were to develop or get their landscaping in, if the adjoining property gets rezoned to something other than residential?
Yes, ma'am.
That could potentially change.
I would say, yes. I would also.
Is it at the time they put the landscaping in, or is it at the time we approve it? Who decides which buffer it is when you're just putting the buffer in because it's, you know, commercial versus residential, or if it's commercial versus commercial? Does that, does that change if the landscaping isn't there yet?
The buffer would be determined during the site plan review process based upon what the adjacent zoning classifications are at the time the site plan is submitted for review and approval.
So site plan, if it's residential, they got to put it?
Yeah, but if in between the time the site plan gets here, it gets rezoned commercial?
We're going to try very hard to.
That'd be the only way.
We're going to try very hard to outpace anybody next door, so.
Perfect. What other questions? Comment?
I'm comfortable with this. We're going to see it at site plan. I'm making a motion, we approve.
Second. Motion and many seconds. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank y'all very much. And our next item is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 7.3 acres located along Veterans Parkway. David Scott Rollet as the applicant. Ms. Rush.
The property owner, Mr. David Scott Rollet, has submitted a petition requesting the property to be annexed into the City of Murfreesboro. The subject property is 7.3 acres and located along the west side of Veterans Parkway as depicted in this map. It is currently developed with a single-family residence and accessory structures behind that. The annexation study area does not include any right-of-way because the adjacent road is Veterans Parkway. The study area is located within the City of Murfreesboro urban growth boundary, and it is contiguous to the city limits along the east and south property lines. Staff has prepared a plan of services for the proposed annexation to study the property in its current state with one residence and for potential future development of residential and commercial. The plan of services is attached to the staff report for the commission's review, and the city services can be provided to the study area upon annexation. For these reasons, staff does recommend approval of the annexation. As I wanted to note, it was simultaneous with this application as a request to zone the property to PRD Villas at Veterans and Highway Commercial District. There were deficiencies. If the commission desires to have this property annexed, it would not move forward to the city council unless the zoning was also recommended for approval to move on to city council. And so for those reasons, staff is asking the planning commission to conduct a public hearing and to make a recommendation for the city council. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. We will open the public hearing and ask if there is anybody that would like to come forward to speak either for or against this item. Okay. See no one? We will close the public hearing. Any other questions or concerns before we vote on this item?
There are none. I make a motion, we approve, subject to any and all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item E will be the zoning application for approximately 1.6 acres located along Veterans Parkway to be zoned CH simultaneous with annexation, 5.7 acres to be zoned PRD, the Villas at Veterans PRD simultaneous with annexation, and to amend the existing Villas at Veterans PRD zoning on 7.1 acres located along Franklin Road. Harney Homes LLC is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Thank you. The applicant, Harney Homes LLC, is requesting to zone a 7.3-acre parcel to PRD Planned Residential District Villas at Veterans and a Commercial Highway zoning district, as depicted on the map, it's on the screen. The PRD is simultaneous with the annexation, that was the agenda item just before this. That property is currently developed with a single-family residence and accessory structures. Of the 7.3-acre parcel, the applicant is requesting that 1.6 of those acres be zoned CH, and the remaining 5.7 acres be added to the Villas at Veterans Planned Residential Development. The proposed amendment to the Villas at Veterans PRD would add 35 single-family residences, and it's comprised of 28 detached housing units and seven attached townhome units. This would result, then, in that PRD having a total of 84 residences. In addition, the amendment prop, is also proposing some changes, fairly minor, but to the streets and the open space areas. On April 15th, 2022, the applicant and staff met with, in regards to the site and building design, that was depicted in the revised plan book. And the result of the meeting was the applicant committing to work with staff on the building elevations for the single-family detached units. Then at the planning commission meeting, a couple weeks ago, on April 20th, 2022, staff presented the following six opportunities with the project for the applicant to continue to work on, and SEC, their civil engineer, had committed to, that he and his client would work with staff to achieve those. Just to go quickly through that list, those six items were to, due to the visibility, to replace the fence material along the rear of the units with an alternative material in color other than white vinyl, to provide street trees, to vary the materials and colors between the detached, single-family units, so that they're not all looking the same. You have some variation between the units. Provide a water table on the sides and the rear of those detached units, and include side and rear elevations in the plan book, because those were, those were not present at that time. And to revise the, the design of the single-family detached units, so that the garages would be recessed and not present, as what we've heard as a common term before, snout houses, and bring the face of the residential portion forward. The plan book, then, was revised on April 28th, and included the side and rear elevations of the single-family detached. Those were included in the staff report for quick reference, and that's the rear, the side, and another rear. The elevations provided, in staff's opinion, were not acceptable for this development, and staff has recommended to the developer at a minimum that they should be at least equivalent to what they've provided for the townhome units. The townhome units, the rears, are much more attractive than the single-family detached. The applicant has committed to make changes. However, their architect was not able to provide those revised elevations in time for the planning commission hearing this evening. So, in staff's opinion, the remaining items that we have, in addition to revising those rears, would be to include the water table base on all front, rear, and side elevations, to provide the architectural design and level of detail for the side and rear facades at a minimum, or better than the, than the townhomes themselves. On the front building elevations, provide a minimum number or percentage for each of the detached house for a style, so that the styles do have variation, the materials and colors have variation between them. Provide a number percentage of houses that will be brick versus fiber cement versus stone veneer. House design shall avoid, shall avoid the snout house and the flat wall plane that were, that are shown in these pictures, by recessing the front of the garage and pulling the residential portion of the house forward. The plan book also stated that all homes would be either one or two stories, however, there was no one-story elevations. They did make that correction to us this week, and have removed all references to a one-story house. And there was no changes to any of the fence material. So, in regards to the commercial, the CH zoning, CH zoning uses are typical uses on a, on a busy road that are commercial. The applicant has indicated that the property is under contract for the development of a restaurant, which would be a permitted use in that zoning district, and staff would be supportive of that type of, of use there. The exceptions requested, the applicant is requesting one exception, both, it's to the townhome units and to the single-family detached, and that is to reduce the rear yard setback from 20 feet to 10 feet. There are no other exceptions that were requested. In regards to the future land use map, the proposed future land use map, 2035 comp plan, indicates that auto-urban residential and general commercial as the appropriate land use characters for the project area. So what they're proposing is consistent with, with what is the proposed future land use map. For reference, the, the current future land use map does designate this property entirely as commercial, general commercial, so the residential portion would be inconsistent with the current map. Staff is making the recommendation that the applicant revise the plan book and bring that back to the planning commission for your review, so you have the opportunity to look at any design changes, architecture changes to the single-family detached, as requested by staff, and as what we had just listed. Staff will continue to work with the applicant to make modifications to that plan book, as noted above, and present that to the next meeting as soon as we get that. Action needed is the planning commission should conduct a public hearing, after which you will need to formulate a recommendation to the city council and the applicant, as well as his civil engineer is here to answer any questions or give more information. And I believe the civils, Matt will be doing his PowerPoint.
You know what it is?
Thank you, Ms. Rush. Matt Taylor of SEC. I've got Mr. Justin Harney, Harney Homes, and Mr. John Harney with me tonight. Do appreciate the time to present the opportunity to build some of those single-family detached homes. Come on, Cal.
Don't even get me started. My dinner's wearing off, so I'm getting hungry again.
Angry.
Mine is too, can you tell? Just trying to figure out how to get Roman to present my next one, so I have all positives show up in the audience.
Oh, Roman.
So, we do want to request a, an amendment to our existing PRD, as Ms. Rush said, for the Villas at Veterans. The property is at the northeast corner, northwest corner of Veterans and Highway 96, shown here in the pink and yellow. This request would add about 7.3 acres on the north side of the existing PRD. Today, the site's mainly open pasture land and row crop, with the additional 7.8, 7 acres having an existing house and some out structures. Here, you can see the existing PRD and commercial highway, and then the uncolored area on the northern portion as the additional area that we're adding to the PRD. This is looking at the site from the entrance to Kroger on Veterans Parkway. This is looking at the site from Highway 96. These pictures are dated a little bit. I don't think there's any corn up right now. The, this is some commercial on the other side of Veterans Parkway, and the same here. This is the existing plan, so you can see, it was all townhomes, so it was 49 dwelling units, the density was just under 6.9 units to the acre, and about, had about 1.8 acres of commercial highway zoning along Veterans Parkway. This, this plan was having all underground utilities, about 3.75 acres of open space, and was completing the fourth leg of the signal along Veterans at the Kroger entrance. New plan, the road network looks very similar, if not identical, along the existing PRD, but we've added a stub to the north and another stub to the west. We have added 35 dwellings, 28 of those are detached, seven of those would be townhomes. Our open space is approximately five acres, and we've increased our commercial highway to almost 3.4 acres along Veterans Parkway. The northwestern corner of this intersection, we do have a restaurant that wants to take that corner in the near future. Again, both the townhomes and the detached will be transferred through an HPR or horizontal property regime. We've maintained a very walkable community, sidewalks on both sides, it's still a very relatively small neighborhood, so it's still very easily, easy to walk to the amenities, which are located central to the property. Every owner here will have to be in an HO, member of the HOA, which will maintain common space and enforce our restrictive covenants. All of our streets will continue to be public streets as well. The townhome design has remained unchanged from the original approval, still brick, stone, fiber, cement, still have garages on all these homes. Here's the elevations of these. The single-family detached is the new offering. Again, we'll have all brick, stone, fiber, cement, all these will be two-story homes, all these will have two-car garages. We understand, agree with staff, that these will need some further modification to have the fully recessed garage and the water table all the way around. Our architect just could not get that done in time, so we're continuing to work with staff. We have outlined that in this presentation, as well as in the text of the program book, and understand we can't move to council until that's done. Adventices, we'll continue to have entrance signage at both our Veterans Parkway, as well as our Highway 96 entryways. The Highway 96 will continue to have the three-rail horse fence to try to mimic some of the other developments along 96 as you go out of town. Will continue to have a pavilion and a playground. We have spread those apart more than the last plan, but we've also connected them with this large, open recreational area, so people can go have a picnic, they can throw a frisbee, they can play some wiffle ball, whatever their heart desires in this space. And we've also have a dedicated dog park, as so many of our projects do, we have located that away from the homes to cut down on that incompatibility between them and the residences. We still have the same primary access points, one on the Veterans Parkway, which will be the fourth leg of the signal, one on the Highway 96, will have, which will have a full complement of turn lanes, and then we'll have two stubs to the west for future extension as those properties develop, and then we'll have one stub to the north as those properties continue to develop. Buffering is very similar to the previous plan, except we've pushed it out to the new perimeter of the property, so you'll have a type C buffer along the west and north boundaries. We will also have a proposed type A landscape buffer along our eastern boundary, and then those commercial users will have their own type C buffer that they will install as they are developed. And then I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the hearing.
Matt, in the original PUD, I think there was something about rentals. Is there something in rentals on the new one as well?
If it was in there, we did not take it out. Did we? I don't, you don't think it was in there?
Yeah, maybe we just discussed it.
We, we could have, but I'll, I'll let Mr. Harney address, I think he is, intends to build and sell these, so, you wanna talk to that? Yeah.
Justin Harney, owner, Harney Homes. We intend to build and sell every unit in the whole entire development. There's no intention right now to rent them. Sure is.
Are you, are you open to the idea of in the, putting something in the book that would not allow to sell them to a corporate buyer? We, we've done that a couple of times, we've, you know, just seen a bit of that, where, you know, a corporate buyer comes in, buys the whole thing, it's a rental facility from day one, basically. If, if you're wanting to sell them, is that, would you be willing to something like that?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harney. All right, no other questions? We'll open the public hearing. If anybody'd like to come forward and speak for or against this item. Okay? We'll close the public hearing. Any other comments, questions?
I would say I'm, I'm delighted that staff took a look at the elevations and, and requested some changes there. I think that'll help, help the, the single-family detached a lot. Really, that's all, if anybody has any questions, I'll make a motion that we, what should we do to approve those with the elevation? Do we need to make that staff comments, or is that?
Going to work with staff to improve the elevations.
Yeah, all right.
Second to this motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve it, but still allow staff, with all staff comments, including staff working with them on the side rear elevations, and any other elevations that they need to, as well as adding the restriction to not sell to.
Corporate buyer.
Corporate buyers, yeah.
Second.
Okay. Got all that? Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. All right. That concludes our public hearings for tonight, and we move on to staff reports and other business, which we have four items here tonight. The first one is mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of a drainage easement located on property at the southwest corner of South Church Street and Westgate Boulevard. Josh Hudson, a Fulmer-Lucas applicant. And Matty, you're gonna take this one?
Yes, ma'am, I'll, I'll take that one. Ms. Kerr worked on these. She is in nice sunny Florida for a well-deserved vacation, so I'll, I'll pinch, pinch hit for her tonight. Our first mandatory referral tonight is for the abandonment of a drainage easement located along the south side of Westgate Boulevard, west of South Church Street. It's where there's been a plan approved for the redevelopment of the MAPCO, located at that intersection of Church and Westgate. It's a rather old MAPCO that's there right now, it's gonna be torn down, a bigger one, you know, bigger, nicer one put in its place. And that property will go all the way back to South Gate Boulevard, where the new facility is going to be constructed. There was a drainage easement that was dedicated back with a subdivision plat in 2006, and with the, with the combination of these lots and the redevelopment, the removal of those lot lines where the drainage easement was going to go, that drainage easement is, is now unnecessary. And as a matter of fact, there were never any drainage facilities that were constructed within that easement, so it's, so it's in excess right now. And so, we would recommend approval, subject to the following staff comments. The applicant must provide to the city legal department all the necessary documentation, included any needed legal descriptions and exhibits required to prepare and record the legal instrument. Number two, the drainage easement abandonment should be subject to the final approval of the legal documents by the city attorney. And number three, the applicant will be responsible for paying any recording fees. And I neglected to mention that the city engineer has reviewed this request and does not have any objection to it. Be happy to answer any questions. We'd request a recommendation of approval to the city council. to the city legal department all the necessary documentation, included any needed legal descriptions and exhibits required to prepare and record the legal instrument. Number two, the drainage easement abandonment should be subject to the final approval of the legal documents by the city attorney. And number three, the applicant will be responsible for paying any recording fees. And I neglected to mention that the city engineer has reviewed this request and does not have any objection to it. Be happy to answer any questions. We'd request a recommendation of approval to the city council.
Okay. If you have any questions?
If there aren't any, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Yes, some staff comments. What is that? What's the acronym for that?
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
STASK, I think.
Yeah, STASK. We could do that.
All right. Moving on. Item B is a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of a drainage easement located on property along the east side of Medical Center Parkway. Chris Mayberry of Reagan Smith is the applicant. And Mr. Blum, are you taking this one again?
Yes, ma'am. This is another drainage easement abandonment. This was actually, there have been several easement abandonment requests by the developers of Clary Park to kind of clean up the existing easements with the redevelopment of that property, or with the development of that property. And this particular drainage easement is located right off of Medical Center Parkway. It's proposed, the drainage is proposed to be rerouted, and when the drainage is rerouted, this existing drainage easement will be rendered obsolete and will be surplus and will be in the way of proposed development. The city engineer has reviewed this request and has no objection to it, provided that the, the recommended conditions are in place. And those recommended conditions of approval are that the applicant must provide to the city legal department all the necessary documentation, including any needed legal descriptions and exhibits required to prepare and record the legal instrument. Number two, the drainage easement abandonment should be subject to the final approval of the legal documents by the city attorney. Number three, the applicant will be responsible for paying any recording fees. And number four, the final plat dedicating the new drainage easement that will replace the old drainage easement shall be recorded simultaneously with the recording of the quitclaim deed abandoning the requested easement. So, we would recommend your approval. The city council, STASK.
All right. STASK.
I thought it was going to be something like...
Just trying to save everybody time.
Right now, I'll make a motion we approve, subject to all staff comments.
No, come on.
Saying that on record.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry I let you down.
Make this happen, man.
We have a mandatory referral to consider the adjustments of easements located on property, at property, at 106 Southeast Broad Street, and city-owned property at the corner of Southeast Broad Street and South Church Street. The City of Murfreesboro Legal Department is the applicant. Mr. Ives?
Thank you, Chair Jones, and commission members. As a technically challenged old person, I'm going to ask if I can prevail on Ms. Green to assist me with the computer here.
I've got the, if you needed your exhibit, David, I've got it up right now.
I think he probably wants the ability to...
And then we need to change pages. Okay. Hopefully, on your screen is a concept plan of what this area will look like on completion. I would, this is a concept, that it's not a construction plan yet, but the building here is McDonald's. That will stay, they're going to stay there. The open space around it will be redeveloped into a park by the city. Town Creek will, here is the overflow right now from Murphy Spring, and it, the overflow goes into a pipe, and it's piped underneath this property. It pipes underneath Church, and then is piped also all the way over to Front Street, where it then daylights as it goes into Cannonsburg. This first section of the Town Creek, how do I get rid of my marker? Sorry. This first section of daylighting Town Creek will cover this area, and the creek is generally going to meander through this way over to South Church. So, we, there are a variety of easements through here, some of which are, many of which are not even recorded. This was developed years ago when the city's water plant was on the other side of where the Discovery Center is now substantially off to the right of this picture. So, I'll just run through what we're going to do. The first one is that the city will grant a new access to McDonald's along this route. So, that's the McDonald's exit, the entrance right now is up here. That will eventually go away, and the new access easement will be granted by the city. The city will also grant to McDonald's a sign easement, so that they can move their sign and have it adjacent to the entrance. This will, in fact, be an off-site sign, which normally would not be allowed. However, because the city is, in essence, taking their existing sign when the existing driveway goes away, we are going to grant them a sign easement down there, so that they can have a sign at their entrance, which certainly they would require to have. I'm not strong enough, Mark, right? This one shows the existing access easement for McDonald's that will be, that will go away. This one will be abandoned. As I say, it's a technically challenged. There will be a new water sewer easement granted. This one, this particular one will be on the McDonald's property, will be granted The second one, I think you can see the dark shade there that continues on over to Church Street. That will be an easement established and donated by the city, a water sewer easement. There is an old public utility easement. We don't think there's anything in it at this point, but there's an old public utility easement that runs right underneath the McDonald's building. So, to clean up things, the city is going to, and that's the dark shaded part there through the middle, the city is going to abandon that easement. There's another public utility easement. Actually, this one is occupied. This is where the pipe goes that currently, the Town Creek, water currently runs through this pipe. We're going to abandon that easement. The plan is that we will seal it at both ends and then pump flowable fill into it to pack it in, so that it will never collapse. Do that rather than have to dig up their parking lot and fill it from the top. In any event, we would propose to abandon that easement, because the water will be going through the creek channel. And finally, there is a small easement required here at the corner of the McDonald's lot, which would be a combination of drainage easement and trail easement, because a walking trail to be created here will be, will nick the corner of their property. Okay. And with that, if there are any questions, we would ask, I'd be happy to try to answer. We would ask that you approve these grantings and abandonance of these easements, so that we can be proceeding with the Town Creek Age One project.
Good. Any questions?
I got one question. Sorry. Did you guys ever, I know this isn't going to be your specialty, but did you guys ever put any plan together to keep that parrot feather from continuing on down out of Murphy Springs, you know, at Discovery Center?
I can't answer that. I don't know if Mr. Huddleston has any knowledge.
Yeah, and the beavers.
And the beavers.
Not aware of anything. Can't really, the beavers get out nonetheless, but I mean, we need, here's the deal. I think it's going to be really important. The fact that we are daylighting this thing is going to create the capability for that to continue to go downstream. If you go upstream from here, it's a substantial issue of Todd's Lake, all the way, you know, all the way to Todd's Lake, and certainly is right there in Discovery Center. If y'all know what I'm talking about, it's the weed that's in there that basically looks like you could walk across it, and it kills out everything else, and, you know, it's, so, you know, just, we have got to make sure that's taken care of before that, we allow any of it, you know, this right here is fine. We're still preparing, but before we start digging stuff up and filling up pipes, and it's just, to me, I think, is very important that we make sure we understand the impact of that, and don't let that get into whatever creek that is down the Lidle, or, you know, and then on to the river and all that business. So, let's just make sure we've taken care of that, please.
I will certainly pass that along to people that know something about parrot feather.
Motion to go through, just ask.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Last item tonight. Mandatory referral to consider the purchase of property at 316 Robert Rose Drive. City of Murfreesboro Administration Department is the applicant.
So, now I'll play Gary Whitaker for a few minutes.
Yeah, this is exciting.
As y'all are aware, we're, the city is working on a project to redevelop the property along Northwest Broad that's across, I guess, the alley behind City Hall, and that includes moving the water and sewer, or Water Resources Department folks to a different location. We have found this building that's on Robert Rose Drive. My black lines didn't come out very well, but it's this property on Robert Rose Drive. We're not sure if Darren can hit the T, or can hit the green from this box, from this area, or not, but I expect he'll probably be trying. In any event, we've found this. It's available, and it's, staff has been working with the current owners on a contract, and we've requested your recommendation toward, to council to approve this purchase.
All right. All right. Any questions regarding this property purchase?
Motion we approve, subject to all staff comment.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
That concludes all the items that were on our agenda tonight. Do we have any further staff reports or business to... All right. We stand adjourned. Thank you very much.